Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority of May 22, 2018. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Bearman?
Here.
Councilmember Cardula?
Present.
Councilmember Castleberry?
Here.
Councilmember Hickman?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is approval of the City Council's special session minutes of April 24th, City Council study session minutes of May 1st, City Council conference minutes of May 8th, City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Municipal Authority, and Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of May 8th, all of 2018, and City Council's special session minutes of May 15th, 2018. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Item number four is a proclamation proclaiming the week of May 20th through 26th, 2018, as Emergency Services Week in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the week of May 20th through 26th, 2018, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Norman. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service as members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services teams consist of emergency medical technicians, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, paramedics, firefighters, educators, and administrators who engage in hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas the citizens of Norman benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals and values the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers. And whereas injury prevention and the appropriate use of the emergency medical services system will help reduce national health care costs. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through 26th as Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Norman. At this time, I'd like to have Jan Emmons, Director of Emergency Services, to come up and get the... Thank you. Do you want to say a few words?
Council and mayor, on behalf of Norman Regional Health System, Chief Sims and all the emergency responders and hospital staff, physicians, thank you so much. This is an honor.
And thank all of you.
We will.
You do wonderful work.[294.38][294.38](APPLAUSE). Item number five is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council by unanimous consent can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items six through 24 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Item number six is an ordinance upon first reading rezoning the property located at 4712 North Porter Avenue from A2 Rural Agricultural District to a spud, simple planned unit development. Item seven is an ordinance upon first reading amending the city code concerning licensure and occupational tax for establishments selling alcoholic beverage and beverages in consistency with state law to be effective October 1st, 2018. Item eight is submission of the finance director's investment report as of April 30th. Item nine is a submission of the monthly departmental reports for the month of April 2018. Item 10 is submission of the city manager's change order report. Item 11 is a bid for the purchase of chlorine gas for the water treatment facility. Item 12 is a bid for the purchase of fluoride water for the treatment facility. Item 13 is consideration of acceptance of request of a proposal, approval of a contract with Lippert Brothers, Inc., in the amount of $900,000. Change order number one decreasing the contract amount by $28,448 for a revised contract amount of $871,552 and associated bonds for the Norman Forward Griffin Park Phase One North Field Improvements Project. Item 14 is a temporary easement. It's the acceptance of a temporary roadway easement from the United States Department of Interior to provide access to a new communications tower near the intersection of Highway 9 and 144th Avenue Southeast in connection with the Emergency Communications System Project Phase Three. Item 15 is consideration of a site plan amendment from Nathan Kineholz to locate a snow cone stand in the homeland parking lot at 2600 West Robinson Street. Item 16 is conveyance of title by warranty deed from the city of Norman to Cedar Lane Homeowners Association to transfer 2.05 acres of real property located adjacent to the Cedar Lane Park site that was in excess of parkland dedication requirements. Item 17 is a change order with Phoenix Construction Services increasing the contract amount by $10,563.48 for a revised contract amount of $90,649.50 for the repairs to the park maintenance building damaged by fire. Final acceptance of the project and budget appropriation from the risk fund balance. Item 18 is a contract with account management resources for collection services related to past due utility accounts. Item 19 is a contract with Rudy Construction Company in the amount of $286,327 and associated bonds for the Main Street paving project from Jones Street to Porter Avenue. Adoption of a resolution granting tax exempt status and budget transfer between project accounts. Item 20 is a resolution appropriating $33,720 from the reimbursements refunds miscellaneous risk management account to repair and replace damaged storm siren unit 43. Item 21 is a resolution establishing a procedure allowing building permit fees charged pursuant to a section of the Norman City Code to be adjusted and satisfied as an incentive for residential homes achieving a certain home energy rating system known as HERS scores. Item 22 is a resolution establishing the 911 emergency telephone fee rate for the calendar year 2019. Item 23 is a resolution adopting the Environmental Control Advisory Board's updated recommendations to implement the mayor's climate control agreement, requiring the preparation of an action plan to implement said recommendations and providing for a progress update to City Council on a semi-annual basis. Item 24 is a resolution expressing a commitment to endeavor to transition the city to 100% renewable energy and committing to appoint a subcommittee of the Environmental Control Advisory Board to develop an outline for the transition. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Second. At this time, I would like to recognize Judd Foster, Directors of Parks and Recreation, to make a presentation about the Griffin Park project.
Thank you, Mayor. Judd Foster, Director of Parks and Recreation. My pleasure to take a few minutes and do a quick presentation on this project for the council. The, as you remember, the Griffin Park master plan was adopted by council back in August of 2017. Following that, the detailed plans and specifications were worked out by our consulting team and were completed in March of this year. Construction bids were advertised in March and April, and a pre-bid conference was held April 10th. We had 21 general contractors in attendance, and subsequently, construction bids were received on April 19th. We got eight bids. Two of those were incomplete. From that point, the low bid at the time, the apparent low bid was from RSM in the amount of $848,800 was disqualified because of lack of sufficient financial information that was required to be submitted, and also lack of experience with similar projects. Your packet tonight has information, has a couple of letters in it from our consulting teams that have recommended this disqualification, as well as our finance office. So the next, the lowest qualified bid we got was from Lippert Brothers Incorporated, the amount of $900,000. This is $50,000 under the architect's estimate for the project. We negotiated the, some of the details of the bid numbers, or the bid details, and come up with change order number one, which reduces the amount by $28,448. We did that by changing the type of grass to a more common species used that would be used for the sod, and selecting a different irrigation subcontract that is more familiar with the existing irrigation system that's in place at the soccer fields. The proposed contract that is before you denied would complete base bid items one, two, and three for a revised price of $871,552. That is $78,448 under the architect's estimate. If it is awarded, work can be accomplished in time for these projects, these fields, to be in use this September, September of this year. This is the, an image of the overall master plan that was approved by council. The first, I'm looking for my pointer, here we go. The first base bid amount was for these two fields. It's, this field's eight and nine, I believe. That would be regraded. They have a crown on them now, and the crown would be removed. It would be graded flat. On the south side of each of those two fields would be a retaining wall that allows the playing surface to be much larger. You may recall that we did a kind of a pilot project like this, just in-house, a year or so ago on these two fields. It turned out very nicely. It's very successful, and so we want to move on and do these next two fields, get the next two fields regraded. The second base bid was for lighting on this field, and currently there are no lights on that field. This project would move the two poles that are here on the south side of the middle field here, move them to the south side of this field, and then put two new poles in between, two new light poles in between that have, that would accommodate light fixtures on both sides so that all of those fields would be lit. And then the third base bid of this project is to relight this southwest field area. Currently, there's four football fields there. They have lighting in place now. Those would be removed, and this area would be relit from the perimeter of it. Then the next phase, not part of this project, but the next phase likely to be the next Griffin project would be to regrade that whole rectangular shaped area into one flat playing surface. And that would give the soccer association the ability to break that up into either three large fields like you see on the drawing there, or six small fields, or any combination in between that they would, however they need to break that up and use that based on different activities and events. Those are the three projects broken down and what they involve. I think Jeff is going to update you as well on the land lease situation too. And I would be, I guess after Jeff has finished, we can take any questions.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you. You know, as we started Norman Ford, it was always contemplated that we would actually purchase that land that's north of Robinson where our current Griffin Park area is located. We've been working on that concept for, well, since Norman Ford passed, even before that, to see if we can work with our Department of Mental Health to not only accomplish that goal for the city, but also working with them to accomplish a very important goal for the Department of Mental Health, which is to make sure that they have adequate facilities to provide for their clientele. And in working towards that goal, they're looking at whether they need new facilities or whether they can use refurbished facilities. And it's taken them a little bit more time to figure that out than what we had hoped. So we haven't been able to purchase the land yet. We have another strong community partner with Norman Regional Hospital that has also started working with the Department of Mental Health to see if there's another avenue or a way in which they can accomplish what the Department of Mental Health wants to accomplish, which is to provide adequate facilities for their clientele. And so they're going to need a little bit more time to work together, to collaborate on how to do that. And so knowing that we've reached a point as city of Norman where we would like to move forward with some improvements to that facility with the hope of one day purchasing it, they have offered, and we've visited with council about this, to approach this a little bit different fashion with maybe a long-term lease arrangement. And so we have submitted to them a term sheet that they're currently reviewing, and had a real positive feedback from both their administration as well as their land manager at the Department of Mental Health last week. And they've sent that now to their legal team for their review, and heard today that they believe that their legal team should have something back to us perhaps by the end of the week. So I think we're pretty close to being able to at least solidify the use of that property for up to 30 years. And if we have an opportunity before that, when the Department of Health and Norman Regional and we figure out a way to help them achieve their mission, if we have an opportunity before that, or before the end of the 30 years, to actually purchase it, then we'll explore it at that time. But at this point, that arrangement has been a long-term lease arrangement. We think we'll have that document hopefully by the end of the week, and we'll be able to move forward with that pretty quickly.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Hickman? Councilmember Bearman?
So I asked to have this presentation because it concerns me that we're approving this money without having the land acquired. And my question, my question is why we didn't have any assurance or commitment in writing when Norman Forward passed? You know, this is, this is something that is not exclusive to this project. We have this problem with several of our projects as we are now experiencing. And I'm happy to support the improvements to Griffin. I do think that we are close enough at this point now. We've pushed this off a little while in the hopes that we will be, that we would have had an agreement by now. But I, from 2015 to now, I don't think that it's appropriate to be spending money without having the land acquired or secured in some way, especially the fact that we didn't even have a commitment in writing for the acquisition of this land. So I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate the work that staff has done to hopefully get us to the point where we will have some kind of a long-term lease for this land. But I felt it was important to have this presentation so that the public could be aware of this, because this is not the only Norman Forward project where we have run into this roadblock. And so, you know, I would hope that we have learned from this and that we won't do this again, where we go to voters and ask for a very significant amount of money without having at least an email or some kind of written assurance that we are going to acquire this land. I know we had some verbal communications, but you know, things happen to people. If someone, if someone who was involved in this discussion were to have, you know, been incapacitated in some way, we have nothing to rely on. And so to have to scramble and look at alternatives for land acquisition is really not the way that I think we should be proceeding with things like this. So I'm happy to support these Griffin Park improvements. I'm glad that we're going to be addressing this in time to get the fields ready for the fall season. But I hope we've learned a lesson, and I hope that we will be sure that we at least have some commitments in writing before we go to voters and ask them to spend a significant amount of money on land that we don't already have secured. That's all.
Other questions about that item? At this time, I'd like to recognize Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works, to make comments on item 19. About this item?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Apparently, Councilmember Hickman wants to ask some questions.
Yes.
Hold on one second, Sean. This is, this isn't a question for you. Back on item 13 on the Griffin Park. If we do do the lease transaction and don't do the acquisition, my recollection was that there was approximately a $10 million budget item in Norman Ford to acquire the Griffin land. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, $10 million was the placeholder, and that was actually the terminology that was used, was a placeholder to try to achieve acquisition of that land north of Robinson.
And so if we do finalize this long-term lease arrangement, that could potentially free up a lion's share or some portion of that $10 million that could then be reallocated to another Norman Ford budget like the senior center. Is that correct?
That would certainly be up to the City Council, I think, and of course, we'll take you guys' direction on that. I think the hope is that there would be some very positive collaboration with the Norman Regional Hospital and the Department of Mental Health that perhaps we don't have to wait the full 30 years to acquire it. But we certainly want to be patient and helpful as possible with our friends at the Department of Mental Health and Norman Regional Hospital. But yeah, at some point, I think we'd like to acquire it, but certainly be guided by what you direct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Castleberry?
I just wanted to make a comment. This kind of goes a bit later on to some of the budget deals, but are we paying sales tax on this particular project? We are? Okay. Again, I'm going to go back to, we'll talk about this more when we get into budget deal, but I think it's ridiculous that we are not using our tax exempt status, and we're paying sales tax even though we get half of it. And the reason why is because we don't have the staff to manage the project and manage the materials coming in and to pay the invoices. And so again, this is when we get to our budget deal, this is why we need an internal auditor to do these types of things. If you look at some of the past Norman Ford projects that we've done, so far, we've spent $1.4 million in sales tax. That's $700,000, which would be our part because some of it goes to the state. I think we can afford an employee that can save us $700,000 in one year. And so editorial comment.
Thank you. Okay. Now, Mr. O'Leary, I think you have a presentation on item 19.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works. I don't really have a presentation. I understood there were questions, perhaps Councilmember Hickman?
It's true. Yes, I did.
That is correct. Councilmember Hickman?
Thank you.
So just for the audience out there who don't remember what item number 19 was, can you just kind of give a quick summary of that? Because you can probably say it better than me. I could say it, but they'd probably rather hear you talk.
I appreciate that. And if I may, I don't normally do this, but there's a really good paragraph, brief paragraph in our staff report, and I would like to read from that, Councilmember, because it does a really nice job of kind of summarizing this. But it says, and it's for those following, on page three of your staff report, "Tonight's agenda item is for council's consideration of awarding a construction contract to Rudy Construction Company for the resurfacing of Main Street from Jones Avenue to Porter." So many of us refer to that as the three blocks east of the tracks. Rudy Construction is the current contractor for the ODOT-administered Main Street Streetscape project located between James Garner and Park Dry, which is the five blocks west of the tracks. So again, if council approves this, we're going to be doing some nice improvements on Main Street pavement for eight blocks of Main Street. The final phase of the Streetscape project, Phase Nine, is to mill and overlay the existing asphalt pavement, including the stamped colored asphalt at intersections, and install new pavement markings. Tonight's contract would extend, again, those Phase Nine improvements from the Streetscape to the three blocks east and provide a continuous, really nice finished product for the asphalt pavement, including the parking spaces. And you know, these pavement conditions are in need of some rehab, and we just felt like this would give a beautiful, nice, fresh look to the final rollout of our Streetscape project, which is going very well, ahead of schedule and under budget. So this was our attempt at capitalizing on the existing contractor. Rudy let them do one project as opposed to bringing in a second contractor in, and were able to get the unit prices, which were quite good for the particular asphalt work that we're doing here.
And Sean, that's part of why I wanted you to come up here, because I want to commend you and the staff. I think this is a great idea, way of showing, being efficient and effective, and we already have a contractor onsite to go ahead and do the other blocks on the other side of the railroad tracks. But for the benefit of the audience, do you have an approximate timeline, since it says our Main Street in downtown, of when this work might be happening, the paving work?
Appreciate that, Councilmember. Again, I'm very proud of our staff and our contractors to say that we are ahead of schedule. We always hope to finish our Streetscape project by early June. We're on track for that, which in terms of the real sidewalks and aesthetic features. This was intended to roll in right after that work, so let's say mid-June at the current rate. And if you approve this contract, that'll be continuous in the same, in the same work. Even today, working with our contractor, there's been discussion on the staff's part as to how best to do the work. And there, the contractor has actually suggested doing it at night, which would reduce the daytime impact to businesses. But we have a lot of residences downtown as well, so we're concerned about noise and that sort of thing. So we're still working through some of the details, but we do like that idea of working at night and being less disruptive to businesses. This kind of work on asphalt pavement is really no more than about a week's total time of construction. It's noisy, it's kind of messy, but it's a beautiful finished product, as you can see throughout the city on these asphalt overlay projects. So we're still working on that, but around mid-June and not more than probably a week's of work to complete the project.
All right, great. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to ask Terry Floyd to come up and talk about item 21, which has to do with the HERS rating and incentivizing green building.
Yes, Mayor and Council, as Mayor mentioned, this tonight is a resolution that's in front of you, R1718-117, that really puts forth a six-month pilot program that we would initiate on July 1st. And this is just a presentation from what we discussed at the council study session on May the 8th. And really, this came out of work that was done out of the Community Planning and Transportation Committee and the good work of that committee in working with staff. And we also met with some in the development community to help us kind of develop this plan to really bring forth an incentive to help with building more efficient homes in Norman, more single-family residential homes. To give you just a quick little glimpse and overview for the public, home energy rating system is, or HERS, is a term that's a little more specific than an overall term of energy rating index. I won't get into the confusion of that because I'll confuse myself. But I will say that both of those methods are used in measuring ratings. And it's a rating system really to determine a home's energy performance. And so homes, unlike my golf game, homes with the lower ratings are rated more efficient than those with higher scores.
than those with higher scores. So the lower the score, the better. So to give you some idea, a home built to the standard building code, the International Residential Code, is somewhere in the neighborhood of a 100 HERS score. Homes that we would be looking to incentivize as part of this pilot program would start their incentive at a 65 score, meaning they would be around 35% more efficient than a standard code-built home. And so our idea is to get more of those homes built in Norman. The testing is done by a third-party raider, and you'll see the picture on the left is a blower door duct test. That's what I was told. I can't give you any more information than that other, and it tells the efficiency of the door. So this program would be for new, brand-new, single-family residential homes that are constructed, and we would adjust a percentage of one portion of their building permit fee. This is the fee that's charged that's really based upon the reviewing of that, and we charge that at 14 cents a square foot. So what this program would allow to happen is that any home that qualifies with a HERS score would be eligible, a single-family residential home would be eligible for a fee adjustment to lower that, to lower that building permit portion of the fee. So to give you an example, the 50% of the permit fee would be adjusted for a home that would score a 65 on a HERS rating, and they would turn in the report to the city. The city would verify that number, and that would be an adjusted fee. There's an additional 5% reduction for each point below 65. So conceivably, a home that scored a 55, which is 45% more efficient than a code-built home, would be eligible to have that portion of their permit fees waived. So to give you a monetary amount, that's, since we judge, since we charge that fee based on the square footage, it isn't a per-dollar figure per home, it's a percentage of that Really, as far as the process goes, it would be noted during the application process, and the applicant or the builder would indicate that they're going to pursue that program. So therefore, that portion of the fee would not be charged until the final report is issued upon certificate of occupancy or when it's completed by the builder. All the other fees, such as utility connections, meters, erosion control, $4 to the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission, excise tax, and other connection fees will still be charged at the rate they're supposed to be charged at. It would just be this one portion of the fee. And then once the certificate of occupancy, in order for that to be issued, we would verify the report, see what it scored, and then any outstanding fees would be paid at that time. There's an appeals process that's put forth that just allows, if there's some discrepancy or some questions about that, it can be appealed to the Planning, Community Development Director. So with the passage of this resolution, we would begin a pilot program, a six-month pilot program, to begin on July 1st. Then we will report back to the CPTC, the Council Finance Committee, or the council after that six-month period, and working closely also just with our development community and really analyzing how this program might work, to then come back to you with any tweaks, what we found in different reports with numbers and thoughts on that. And in the event that this would like to be something we would continue on into the future or on a permanent basis, it would require some changing in Section 5 of our ordinances. But really, for us to get a beat on what program might work best for everyone, we're suggesting this pilot program through the passage of this resolution tonight. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions on that and go from there.
Councilmember Bierman.
Thanks for this. I really, I really am excited about this program. I think it's, I think it's going to be really great for Norman. I do have one question. What is the average new home rated right now? Are they being energy efficient to meet market demand already?
That we don't know. It's kind of a varying amount. We do have some homes that do do some HERS scoring. What's interesting about the pilot program is it will allow us to identify those homes and know what they score, whether that's a 65, a 68, a 73. But from what some of the research that we've read, without actually going out and doing any type of program where we would select random samples of homes that have been built and test them on our own to know that benchmarking, we think it's somewhere in the ballpark of around 100 scores, what the code-built home would do, just built solely by the code.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Hickman.
Thank you, Terry, for the presentation and for all your help with the CPTC Committee and others to get this together. You talked about this third-party or this, the rating system. Is that a rating done by the builder or by a third-party independent group?
It's independent of the builders. So there are companies that specialize in that, and they're hired by the builder, but they are independent of the building, builder themselves.
And is there a fee associated with that that the builder has to pay?
It's typically, depending on, it's all about the size of the home. It can range from $300 to $400 for smaller homes, all the way up to $1,000 for very large homes, but that's kind of the going rate, I understand it to be.
And in the research that you did, did you find another city in Oklahoma that has an energy incentive program to incentivize the construction of energy-efficient homes?
I did not. As a matter of fact, some of the information we received on a program came out of Colorado Springs, Colorado. So there are some of those programs there, but in Oklahoma, I didn't find any.
So to the best of your knowledge, if this council adopts this pilot program to incentivize energy-efficient homes, it'll be the first in Oklahoma?
By municipality, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Floyd? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make some brief comments about item 23 and 24. Those are resolutions that the council just passed. One was to adopt the Environmental Control Advisory Board's updated recommendations to implement the mayor's climate agreement. And the other was the 100%, renewable initiative. And this is two different groups. One was our own Environmental Control Advisory Board, and one was the 100% Renewable Citizens Initiative. And they, these groups were able to work together so that we could have some complementary resolutions. But I want to recognize Amanda Nairn and Matthew Rom from the Environmental Control Advisory Board. They basically went back in 2005. Mayor Harrelson actually had signed a mayor's climate agreement. Then in 2009, Mayor Rosenthal asked the Environmental Control Advisory Board to do an implementation plan. And so, and they did that. And then this past year, they went back and evaluated it and came up with a 12-step plan to continue moving in that direction to make some really important environmental changes in terms of renewable energy and in terms of recycling and the tree canopy and a lot of other things. And so I really appreciate that years of work. And then the 100% renewable group. How many Environmental Control Advisory Board members are here? Would you guys raise your hand? Great. All right. How many 100% renewable citizens do we have? All right. Good for you guys. They worked really hard. And, and their recommendations will require the city to start looking at a plan to plan for 2035 and 2050 so that we can be using all clean energy and renewables. And these are really significant commitments, so I applaud the City Council for agreeing to do that, and we'll get started with that subcommittee really soon. So thank you all very much. I think we may be the first to have passed that initiative, and I don't know if we have any other mayor's climate initiatives. So Norman's first in a lot of ways. That's great. Okay. Other comments or questions? Oh, do.
My name is Jana Korn, and I'm a member of the Ready for 100 Communications Team. And I've been asked to present the resolution that you guys have already approved. But I first just wanted to thank you for putting that on the agenda, and I wanted to thank all of the council members for their time and attention. I just wanted to give a kind of a brief overview of Ready for 100. The coalition started last summer with a group of 12 of us reading, discussing, and planning how to build a coalition, seeking input from the greater community, and how to draft policy, which draws on this input. After the coalition grew slowly, each, with each monthly meeting, as more community leaders, religious leaders, church green teams, business owners, representatives from unions and from the underserved, OU students, representatives from civic organizations, and local renewable industries shared their personal stories and their ideas and concerns on what a renewable future might look like for Norman. We held trainings and workshops, roundtable discussions, listening sessions, town halls throughout the year, and we had many productive, smaller meetings and one-on-one conversations with so many people that led us here today. So to conclude, I would just like to thank all of the experts in the fields of equity issues regarding renewable energy, home efficiency and building codes, solar-wind technology, human rights, and state law. We would also like to thank the local businesses who showed their support for the transition to renewable energy. And we would also like to thank the Environmental Control Advisory Board. And finally, we would like to thank the Norman community for their support and their engagement. And we are so grateful for their involvement, and we look forward to continuing to build a coalition and to engage more community members as we enter the accountability and implementation stage of Ready for 100. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to say anything? We'll give you, we'll give you equal time.
You guys really messed it up. I didn't want to say anything. I just want to thank council for bearing with us. It took us longer than we thought. We're a nine-person volunteer board. We found this wonderful document that previous mayors had and councils had approved and put into place. It has 12 action items, all dealing with different aspects of the environment, mainly to do with city operations, buildings, and infrastructure. So encourage you to look at our document. It is on the city's website. One thing that we focused on was coming up with what the city had accomplished in that time, and the list is extensive. So we should all be very proud of ourselves. The city should be very proud of what they've accomplished in the last 10 years. And then we implemented new recommendations that are mostly five-year-type goals. So we're excited to get to work and figure out how to implement some of it. Some of it's already happening. In fact, the HERS incentive that, tonight. So some of it, those wheels are already moving, and a lot of it is low-hanging fruit that we can do very easily. So we appreciate everyone's patience. We look forward to tackling these initiatives. We know we have the community's support, and thank you so much.
Thank you, madam. Councilmember Hickman.
If, I'm, Mayor, or Mayor, could I ask everybody here that's here for RF100 to stand up so that maybe some of us might want to take a picture of you guys so we can memorialize this moment? I thought Mac might want to. Thank you guys very much. I just, I was going to say this from Ms. Lann's comments, but since everybody's went ahead and talked. This is a really special night for me. Some of y'all know I'm a member of the Cherokee Nation, and from a native standpoint, we consider ourselves, and one of the missions of the Cherokee Nation a few years back was to be stewards of the land. And that's something that we take very seriously. And all of you here are stewards of the land tonight with what we are doing, and we all need to be proud of that. From the folks like Matthew and Amanda with ECAB and the work they've done, I went back and looked, and I found it was April 2016 was my first ECAB meeting, because the minute say newly-elected Councilmember Bill Hickman, and they started discussing these things, I think that was even before Matthew was on that committee, talking about these environmental initiatives and updating things. And at that time, I think we were talking about recycling and tree canopy. To the folks recently with RF100 who have done heavy lifting and great work in the community with businesses, with the mayor and others, and it's just, it really makes my heart swell that we're here tonight doing this, these things that are the first of their kind and are groundbreaking from a municipal standpoint. And I just wanted to point out that this isn't, at least for me, and I think everybody on this council tonight, these aren't just plans that are going to be put on the shelf. And I was, it's apropos that the same night we're passing these resolutions and setting these goals, we're actually passing the first policy heading down that road. Like Amanda said, this HERS initiative to incentivize energy-efficient homes is directly in line with going towards 100% renewable and the goals set by ECAB. And those of you that love this discussion, and I'm honored and blessed by the mayor to serve as the Chair of the Community Planning and Transportation Committee, this Thursday, we will be talking about the tree canopy, one of ECAB's other 10 goals and missions that they set out. And we'll also be talking about water conservation and promoting water, homes that have water efficiency and water conservation. So we are already putting in motion goals and objectives to move forward towards these resolutions. And I'm looking forward to our council retreat this summer, in August, to continue setting those goals. And that's the important part, is we have to each year continue to set goals that this body can pass and move towards furthering the ECAB goals, furthering the RF100 resolution. So this is the start of the process. But I want everybody to know that it's wonderful, and I really appreciate the mayor letting me be the chairperson, her putting this mayor's initiatives on the agenda, the ECAB initiatives as well as RF100. And I think everybody deserves another round of applause. Thank you all so much.
Councilmember Clark.
Hello, everyone. It's also fifth grade celebration at Reagan Elementary, and I have two children. That's where he was at. I'm very excited. I think we're talking about Ready for 100, yes? I want to thank my husband for all of his work on this. It's the first time that he's been going to city staff, so good job, honey. I'm also very, very, very excited about this. It's been an honor to be a part of that. And to all of you that have worked so tirelessly on this, I mean, that's, you're the reason Norman is awesome as it is. So thank you for that. And I wanted to point out that with the mayor's climate control agreement, one of their recommendations is handling the issue with plastic bags. Hope you all caught that. Okay. So well done. I'm very excited for all of you, and I appreciate all of your hard work.
Final comments from the council. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously. Okay, we're to item 25. This is a public hearing regarding the FYE 2019 City of Norman Proposed Operating and Capital Budgets and the Norman Convention and Visitors Bureau, Inc. budget with detailed annual work plan. Okay. Let them get out and then... I'll entertain a motion to conduct a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor is to conduct a public hearing. By a show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right's hands. Those opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. This time, I'd like to recognize Anthony Francisco, Finance Director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am Anthony Francisco, the Finance Director. It is my privilege to present this public hearing on the fiscal year 2018, 2019, operating and capital budgets for the City of Norman. As council is aware, the budgeting process is pretty much a year-round process here in Norman. The council gives input throughout the budget process to the city manager. The city manager then presents the executive budget to the council, which was presented to the council in a series of study sessions in April and the start of this month. And now we turn to the part of the budget where the public gives input to the council in its deliberations and consideration of the budget. The total budget on the revenue side for fiscal year 19 is $214,501,000. is $214,501,000. This pie chart represents the major sources of those revenues. Sales tax is our major source of revenue. Fees and charges, particularly our utility user fees, are the second major source of revenue. On the expenditure side, we are budgeting $270,939,000 to be spent during this fiscal year. The major sources of those expenditures are the major sources of services to the public. Public safety, capital improvements, parks, public works. Those things that touch our citizens the most are what we are budgeting for. The concern might be the difference between the $214 million of revenue and the $270 million of expenditure. And we would point out that the major reason for that difference is funds that have been previously received by the city, particularly for large capital projects for the Norman Forward Program. That money is already in the bank and was received in previous fiscal years and is budgeted to be spent in this fiscal year. So that accounts for tens of millions of that difference. The library project that you see here is the largest example of that. The general fund is the major operating fund of the city, where most of those services are delivered. We are budgeting $75,535,000 of revenue in the general fund. You'll see that the major source of those revenues is sales and use tax. And I would point out that, again, this pie chart looks a lot different in cities in Oklahoma than it would in cities anywhere else in the country. Most other municipalities would have a more balanced pie between sales and use tax, property tax, and other sources of revenue such as you see here. But in Oklahoma, cities do not receive property tax for operational purposes. So our dependence on sales tax is extremely high. We have experienced a pretty steady trend of growth in our sales tax. This is looking back over the last 15 years. But this would actually hold for about the full 40-year period of the Norman sales tax history. But that growth trend has been interrupted in recent years. We heard earlier about the Amazon effect or what you may have related to the economy and those sorts of things. But for whatever reason, you see that that growth trend has been interrupted. And we are projecting, over these last two fiscal years, that we are actually collecting sales tax at a rate three, below where we were three years ago. And the problem is that our expenditures continue to grow to provide those services to our citizens, and our major source of revenue is not growing at the same rate. So we have an expenditure budget in the general fund of $79,304,000. And that $4 million difference between expenditures and revenues in the general fund is of more concern than it is in the overall pie charts that we have seen. And we cannot continue to draw down fund balance as we are projecting to do this fiscal year. The sales tax is distributed within Norman. It's an 8.75% total. 4.5% of that goes to the state. The city's general fund receives 2.3%. The capital fund, 0.7%. The public safety sales tax, the Norman Forward sales tax, receive 1.5% each. And then 0.25% goes to the construction of the Cleveland County Jail. The property tax distribution pie that you see there, we would point out that yellow slice, that's a fairly small slice for the property tax pie. The city does get property tax to pay off general obligation bond indebtedness and judgments against the city. But the overall citizens' property tax bill, very little of it goes to the city. This chart kind of shows that Norman is a very small governmental operation in comparison to cities our size. We have a very lean and mean operation, if you will. But again, it's people that deliver those services to the citizens. And so that's, while it's nice and efficient, is it effective? And that's the question that our citizens should consider. A large part of the city's operations are not paid for out of the general fund or out of tax revenues. They are paid for by our utility enterprise customers. So we have three major utility enterprises, the Water Utility, the Water Reclamation Utility, and the Sanitation Utility. They, those, unlike the general fund, those enterprises are driven by large capital projects. So we have a large ongoing project in the Water Utility, expanding our water treatment plant, improving our water quality. We just completed a large water reclamation facility improvement that was about $60 million. Our sanitation utility is embarking on an affluent reuse program in our compost facility. So there are major operations going on in those utility enterprises that are self-funded by our utility customers. Those utility customer rates in Norman are extremely low in comparison to our benchmark cities. As you see here, we are about the lowest all-in utility rate for any of those cities that we compare ourselves to. So again, our utility rate customers and our citizens as a whole get a really good bang for their buck, for their tax dollars and for their utility rate dollars. At this point, we will open it up to the public, give your input to the council and to our budget staff, and we will consider those comments as we move forward in the budget process. Thank you.
Are there questions from the council regarding the presentation? Councilmember Wilson.
Anthony, I have a few questions, and I'll apologize upfront for the convolutedness of them. But I have some understanding issues about the projection model. Did we, the growth trend was interrupted three years ago-ish, two years ago. Did we make a model change then on our projections?
We made a model change about four years ago. And the regression-based modeling that we had done, which was trend-based, we stopped doing that, actually. And we projected more on just historic collection patterns and what are called deterministic patterns of where we think revenues will be. So we knew that the long-term trend analysis would not hold true because of things that were going on in the economy and because of the overall retail-based trends that we're experiencing.
Okay, then I have more questions. Don't leave yet. Our revenue projection model, does that, did that encompass, I know we had like a found sort of revenue stream from the TIF situation? Not really, but new to us, kind of, that's now going into our general fund and capital?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that, how did we handle that?
Basically, we identified a total of about $5 million that over a 10-year period had been misapplied or misapportioned to the University North Park TIF Fund. Staff identified that back in September. The council and the Finance Committee directed that we redeposit those funds where they should have been in the general fund and the capital fund. So that has been done in fiscal year 18. And part of this budget proposal is that will be available for appropriation in the general fund and capital fund balance.
I'm actually asking about the money that was going into the TIF that should have been going into the general as a reoccurring situation, like 600,000?
Yes, ma'am. 600,000 in the general fund.
So that's just absorbed into our funds now?
It's just been built into the...
And we use that in our projections?
Yes, ma'am. It's built into the projections now.
Built in. So is that going to give us a false growth pattern next year?
No, because, again, we would expect that the historic growth pattern of apportionments from the University North Park will continue to grow. While our overall sales tax has been slow, the University North Park apportionment has continued to grow. And that has been built into projections on both sides.
So did we add anything to gobble up that money?
When you say gobble up?
Well, I mean, it's, you know, we wouldn't have had it or we didn't know we were going to have it. So did we add anything, any expenditures to?
No, we didn't add any new expenditures to speak of, not because of that, at least. So it just became part of the revenue pie that is available for appropriation.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hickman.
Just following up on that, Anthony. If I'm reading the financials correctly, we put in $4 million of found TIF money into the FY18 budget. And the FY19 projected budget is to spend $2 million out of the fund balance. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So even though we added $4 million to the pot this year, we're still planning to spend $2 million more than we're bringing in next year. That's a $6 million swing, it seems to me.
No, the $2 million shortfall that you're referring to remember is an annual basis. It's a year, current year revenues versus current year expenditure.
No, I understand that. So in FY19, you're going to spend $2 million more, draw down the fund balance $2 million?
Yes, but that's standalone. It's not as if, you know, you add that to the money that was added in the previous fiscal year 18.
No, I understand. Let me ask the question this way. In the past two years, has this city government drawn down over $5 million out of the fund balance?
Yes. If all of our projections hold true, yes, by the end of next fiscal year.
And is that sustainable?
Absolutely not.
But are we continuing that trend next year with what we're projecting far as a drawing down $2 million more dollars out of the fund balance?
That's our projection, yes, sir.
And you're comfortable with that?
I am not comfortable with that being of the long-term practice. Again, as we have discussed, under the direction of the council, some changes need to be made on the revenue side and/or the expenditure side, such that we address that negative net difference on a long-term and an ongoing basis.
And I think to follow up on what Councilmember Wilson was saying, my recollection was there were $6,000, $700, $800,000 of new recurring revenue going into this general fund budget, correct?
Yes.
But we're not able, because our budget is in the situation that it's in, to hire a single new staff person out, using that $6,000, $700,000 of recurring revenue, such as a sustainability officer or an internal auditor, or even with new money, we still are not in a position to expand our services or hire new staff. Is that right?
The addition of staff would be at council's direction and the city manager's control. But with the additional $600,000 or thereabouts of lessened apportionment, we are still projecting to draw down $2 million now. That is without adding any staff. But it's also without cutting any staff. So it would be, you know, the decision about what council directs to do related to staff and any other expenditures, if you want to keep that projection where it is, which we certainly hope that it won't stay at that projection. But what we decide to do is certainly at council's discretion.
And I think you said that we found this money in September 2018. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
When did, I'm sorry, '17. When did you know that you needed to use it to plug the FY18 budget?
We presented that as one possibility to council, I believe in December. Council in January and February directed that it be deposited to the general fund and capital fund.
Well, I'm looking at the minutes from November 9th Finance Committee meeting, where several councilmembers expressed they didn't want the money to be spent. They wanted it set aside. Councilmember Clark mentioned sidewalks. Others mentioned senior center. Wanted that money set aside since it was one-time found pot of money that, you know, we shouldn't be, I think I used the example of like getting a tax return that you don't usually get and put it in your family's budget, and you go out and spend it, knowing that next year you're not going to have it again. But staff put that money into the budget, and we're planning to spend it now. We're not setting it aside and using it for one-time projects. Is that correct?
I don't think that's correct, sir. I believe that what council is directing or has directed is that the money that was deposited to the capital fund be used for those sorts of projects that you just described to be done on a one-time basis with roughly $1 million that was deposited to the capital fund.
Well, I'm talking about the $4 million on the general fund line item that I can point you the number, to that line item number if you'd like, that went into the general fund that's not going towards sidewalks or senior center or things that are in the Finance Committee minutes of November 9th that you were present at. So my question is, why didn't that happen? Why are we having to use that money to plug this budget hole? To mask, I think was the word used in the city manager's budget letter?
Because of just that. And it was, again, council's direction that we use the funds to avoid the scenario that we would have otherwise faced, which was, you'll recall it, your direction in the Finance Committee meeting when we explored what we would do if we did not use that money to quote-unquote "mask" the shortfall in the general fund.
Well, Anthony, with all due respect, the first time that, that I recall us being made aware definitively that staff was using those dollars to plug FY18 budget and to include in the budgeting for FY19 was when we received the FY19 budget from the city manager with his letter, I believe that's dated in April 2018. Now, when we voted, that was a vote to put the money into the general fund budget balance. We didn't know, I didn't know at least, and I think others on council didn't realize that that was masking a hole that we already had in FY18, at least not to the extent that it appears it's going to be over $1 million.
I can't speak for your, you know...
Has staff worked on a strategic plan of how to address this, what I would call structural budget problem?
Yes, over a period of years, we have discussed with council both large and small methods of addressing the strategic problems in the general fund. It will be at council's discretion whether they pursue any of those proposals.
Well, I'm not comfortable with the proposal that was originally provided, which was to cut public transportation, funding to CCFI and other social services groups, things that would impact our arts community, senior theater. I'm not comfortable with that recommendation. I can assure you of that, and I want to make that clear. But I'm also not comfortable with this budget has presented. We can't continue to spend millions of dollars a year out of our fund balance because that is not sustainable, and we need to roll up our sleeves and sharpen our pencil, in my opinion.
That's absolutely right.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Just to clarify a little bit here, and I'll come back at the end so I want to hear some public comments, stuff like this. That $2 million shortfall that you have budgeted, 1.4 million of that is part of that 2% reserve, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so could you talk a little bit about that 2% reserve, about how that is not actual money that, it's money we hope we don't spend, but as opposed to the rest of the budget, which is money we are going to spend? Since you talk about this, where really, if we don't have a disaster...
If we don't have a disaster that requires additional staffing from outside contractors for debris removal or what have you, then, yes, we hope that we wouldn't have to spend the 2% emergency reserve allocation.
Then we're closer to $600,000, just from operations.
Yes, sir.
Okay. When's the last time that we spent some money out of that 2% reserve?
I believe fiscal year 15, might have been 16.
Okay, because most of the time...
I know it was the downburst storm.
Yeah, I think it was May 7. A lot of time, and this resolution council years ago passed that to set that aside for these type of things. But a lot of times when we have these big windstorms or hailstorms or ice storms that come in that require this removal, it's usually something we get reimbursed via FEMA. Most of them are usually big enough for that. This is really the smaller type of things that aren't big enough that we get reimbursed from a FEMA-type stuff. And so this is one of the reasons why I want to, and to answer Councilmember Hickman's question, in the Finance Committee, we did talk about at the last meeting, putting together a long-term strategic plan. So I don't know whether staff's addressing it or council's addressing it, but we are doing that. And one of the reasons, and one of the things I want to put in there is that for council to look at changing this 2% requirement to making it where we put like 1% into the operating budget for this and take the other 1% and put it into a savings account. budget for this, and take the other 1% and put it into a savings account. Instead of just saying every year, we think we're going to have something, and take that money away from the services that we need to provide, let's save for disasters. Instead, we haven't had ones in almost four years, three years. So had we done that on this basically, we'd have about $4 million sitting in an account that we could use for disasters, and that was, instead of hemorrhaging ourselves every annually, we would actually have some savings accounts built up for this. I'd like to kind of look at that. We're going to talk a little bit more in Finance Committee. But I think that's a proposal we can do going forward to look at that and put capital in. I don't want to get a $20 million disaster fund sitting out here, but I think we can kind of look at those type of things too. But I'll have some more comments later, but I want to make it clear that we're not, our operating revenues, our operating expenses are not $2 million more than our operating income, that there is a $1.4 million reserve that we have in there. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's an assumed expenditure that we hope we don't have to spend.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public. Oh, are we going to do that first? Okay, before we do that, apparently we should do Dan Shim on the Convention and Visitors Bureau budget.
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you. It's my pleasure to submit the FY19 Visit Norman Budget and Annual Plan of Work to you all. The mission of Visit Norman is to improve the local economy by attracting overnight visitors, meetings, and conventions and events to the city. We're funded with, as you know, the guest tax. Every time someone stays in a hotel, they pay a 5% guest tax. Visit Norman receives half of that as their budget. The other half is split between the arts and the parks. And speaking for myself and the entire staff, no, and I say this every year, but we wake up every day loving the job we get to do of selling Normans. So there's not a better place in the world that we get to market and attract visitors to. So we will focus next year on the following things. Local interaction. We'll work locally to engage the community as we look for meeting and event prospects. That includes being a part of civic organizations and community organizations. Many of those organizations have members that go to conferences across the country, tapping into those that serve either on those boards or just giving us prospects to try and attract a Norman. Quarterly hotel and attraction events, bi-monthly sports committee meetings, hotel lodging meetings, and then features in local magazines such as Boyd Street and others. We'll also work on a state level to continue to build our relationships with the Oklahoma Travel Industry Association, the Oklahoma Travel and Recreation Department, and a myriad of other memberships like Society of Government Meeting Planners, State Association Executives, and Oklahoma Business Travel Partnerships. So we'll do sales blitzes to all of those state associations and groups, trying to attract them to Norman. They choose a lot of times, if they're in Oklahoma State Association, where they want to meet within Oklahoma, the metro, Tulsa, other areas, and so we want to bring those groups to Norman. We'll enhance our electronic communications and do fam trips to Norman to show off what we have here. We have a lot to show off. On national prospecting, Visit Norman typically is a regional destination for these types of groups, but we do have some niche national groups that come here, thanks to weather, the university education, other things like that, fraternal. We'll do appointment-based trade shows, allowing us to pre-qualify who we meet and give us a guaranteed number of prospect meetings. We'll do regional and national sales blitz efforts, and we'll enhance our relationships with our partners, the hotels, by meeting with their counterparts frequently and communicating on a consistent basis. On the marketing front, we'll shift even more towards digital marketing than we have in the past. To brag just a bit, we just recently won the Merit Award for Best Overall Marketing Campaign, Best Website, and Best Partnership by bringing social media influencers here to Norman, Oklahoma City, and Stillwater. So that was through the state's Travel Industry Association. So the team does a great job spending these dollars. Fam trips and media blitzes will focus on bloggers and influencers as opposed to the traditional radio stations and newspapers. We'll continue to drive potential visitors to the outstanding website that we won the award for through search engine optimization, search engine management, and we'll look to create experiential packages that our visitors can explore. More and more, as those of you that attended our National Travel and Tourism Luncheon, more and more visitors are looking to go beyond the show and tell and get immersed into the experience that only a place like Norman can offer with weather, with sports, with other things. So we'll continue to build those experiential attractions for people to come see. We'll also provide world-class service to those groups that have chosen Norman, so that when they're here, they have such a great experience, they want to come back. We're looking forward to an outstanding year, and thank you for your continued trust and partnership. With that, I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Clark?
It's not so much a question as a comment. I've really appreciated all of your digital efforts. A lot of us are big on social media, and a quick share is wonderful, and I'm sure Sarita can appreciate too, that when you do these packages, East Norman is included because we have a lot to offer out there as well. So I really appreciate how you do the well-rounded view of Norman. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hickman?
Hey, Dan. I just wanted to congratulate you and your team for your awards. I'm glad you mentioned that. It was a wonderful achievement, and you guys should be commended for that. And I was able to attend your luncheon, and I thought your speaker was outstanding. His, what's in your snow globe, experiential visiting to Norman shopping, was a really innovative and neat idea. One of the things that I haven't done yet, that is on my to-do list, is there's a ghost walk that you can do sometimes in Norman on a Friday night art walk.
Second Friday.
Yeah, second Friday night art walk. So things like that, and like Councilmember Clark's talked about, the brewery tour, I think there are a lot of neat ideas that you guys could build upon to go along with what Joe mentioned at the luncheon. And so, and the digital campaign, I think I shared a couple of y'all's posts today. For people out there that are, have opinions about what are the top patios in Norman for dining, go check out the Visit Norman social media page, and you can chime in on that discussion. So I wanted to recognize you guys for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
At this time, we will take public comment on the budget issues.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Scott Martin with Norman Chamber of Commerce. Before I get to my comments concerning the budget, since I've had to miss my 14th wedding anniversary tonight, I'd like to wish my wife happy anniversary. Plus, my eight-year-old successfully, his baseball team successfully won tonight, so I'd like to congratulate them. Another reason why I'm for family-friendly council meetings, so I don't want to miss those activities. But let's talk about the budget. It's related to families. The services that you provide day in and day out in the city impacts our families, whether it's transportation, public safety, health and wellness with our water, sanitation, all of those things matter. You've heard outlined this evening, and you know the crisis better than I do that you're in. You're looking for solutions, you're looking for opportunities to address the concerns that we as a citizenry expect you to address. Prior to the council meeting this evening, you heard many presentations and studies about a potential solution. And I'd like to talk briefly about that, because I think it's very important that that be at the forefront of your mind as you consider the budget you're going to pass and possible ways to achieve a more balanced budget going forward. And the presentations earlier were great. They're informative, insightful, and I think they're very important. But I'd like to point out just a few facts that you need to keep in mind. All of those dealt with our University North Park TIF. And let's remind ourselves that over, since its inception nearly 10 years ago, the city's collected over $80 million through April of this year. $50 million of that has come to the city, over $30 million to your general fund. The rest has been dispersed to public safety, sales tax, Norman forward, and other issues. Imagine what you would be in, the situation you'd be in right now, without that $30 million, $50 million to address critical city services. But that's in the past, it's got us here today, and certainly has bridged a lot of your concerns over the last few years. But let's look into the future. It was presented to you earlier, a plan going forward, a long-term, 25-year plan to successfully expand our jobs and quality of life in Norman. Councilwoman Hickman, earlier you questioned the finance director about that $2 million shortfall in your reserve fund, and what are you going to do about that? Ms. Palmeroy came up with a solution earlier of how to immediately address that with a $2 million plus cash infusion to the budget to solve part of your problem that you have. Now, that's just the immediate problem. Clearly, there's lots of issues going forward that I know you're concerned about, so let's talk about those just briefly. What's the potential of the proposal that was laid before you earlier this evening that I hope that you get more time to consider and talk about? Over the 25-year lifespan of this new project, it stands to generate, just for the city alone, $175 million. Now, if you do nothing, and we allow the existing TIF either to live out its life or to end early, as some has suggested, that potential growth will not occur. Certainly, there'll be growth. The landowners are going to develop that piece of property, but not to the potential that's been put forth. The dynamics, the energy, the excitement with that particular project happens because of certain elements within the project. The arena, the entertainment district, the high-tech manufacturing, the urban housing, all of those together bring together a live, work, and play environment that I believe most of us can get really excited about. And so I would highly encourage you and urge you to consider the proposal that's been put forward to you tonight, earlier in your study session. I know there'll be other opportunities. Hopefully, the Planning Commission will bring, will consider that in June. Hopefully, there'll be other public hearings that will happen later in June, ultimately leading to what I hope is a positive approval by this council to say yes to University North Park, say yes to funding those core services, the ones that I mentioned my family's really concerned about, and that all these families I know behind me are concerned about. They're the same things you're concerned about. But to be able to provide those services, it's going to take revenue to make it happen. And you have a solution before you, and it's a timely solution, it's a solid plan, and I would encourage your yes support, University North Park. Thank you.
My name is Stephen Ellis. I am a professor in the Philosophy Department at the University of Oklahoma. My research specialty is in sort of normative aspects of decision-making. So I do philosophy of science and business ethics, and I've also had sort of a side research project on economic development incentives. So I've actually looked at the evidence for a lot of the stuff that I would like to talk about tonight. I feel glad that I followed Mr. Martin, because now I don't have to justify talking about the UNP TIF when we're supposed to be talking about budgets. But thinking about the budget, Hippocrates, when discussing the art of medicine, said, first, do no harm. And really, the same goes for budgeting. The best way to make money is not to waste money. We really need to discuss the nuts and bolts of various programs tonight, but I fear that you, as a council, are actually poised to do something that's really, really silly in budgetary terms. So we have to have the intervention first. So let me put it to you this way. Norman really needs to stop buying the magic beans. That's pretty much what was on offer during Mr. Martin's discussion. The UNP Arena Program really, as we'll see, is sort of magic beans, it's being dangled in front of you as a solution to a problem that's largely a structural problem. And the entire TIF discussion that we had about an hour ago, the pitch was essentially, if this works, we're really going to be rich. But no one is providing any evidence that this program will work for Norman. We had Mr. Martin's sort of gut feeling about what will be attractive to people, but if you look at the actual data provided in all of the projections, and they get called studies, but this is really just spreadsheet work, all of the projections take as inputs success of the University North Park program. No one is providing you with any evidence that there is going to be success up there. They're just saying, look, if you parachute in a bunch of jobs, and firms, and houses, and they fill up, that'd be fantastic. Well, tell you what, I'll save you some money right now. If you invest $100 million in a 100-acre site, that site's going to do pretty damn well. You can gild it essentially, and it will make progress. The problem, of course, is none of that has anything to do with Norman as a whole. And we all know that if you put all of your fertilizer on one corner of the garden, or if you're a student and you put all of your study into one course, that can make the other part of the garden, or the other courses, do less well. And in fact, we know that TIFs, in particular, tax increment financing, they work by moving economic activity. The entire sales pitch here is to get people for outside of Norman to come to Norman. But it's not as though there's some invisible barrier that keeps people from, who are currently shoppers in Norman, the 80% of the people who are to go to basketball games, from going to the University North Park TIF as well. TIFs work by cannibalizing someplace, and the concerns about cannibalization are just literally not addressed in any of the economic evidence that you're looking at. Look at all the studies. You've got the Doffenbach Study, you've got the CLNS Study, or I guess it's the other way around, CSNL. You've got the Department of Commerce Study, and they all start with, let's suppose this thing works. Well, why would you do that? The theory of TIF suggests that it doesn't, and this is actually a very important point. We don't have a ton of evidence. No one's done a full-on ex-post study of our experience at the UNP TIF so far, but the evidence that we do have, which was provided by Mr. Francisco, suggests that the TIF hasn't changed Norman's overall trajectory in terms of sales tax, and there's theoretical evidence that would be the same for ad valorem tax at all. It's just siphoned off stuff that was going to happen anyway in Norman. Now, we can debate about what the level of cannibalization is. TIF theory suggests it's likely to be around 100%. That's your median discussion, right? But we can talk about that, but somebody should talk about that, right? And so far, you got nothing on that issue whatsoever. So the elephant in the room here is, if you're thinking about buying in to the UNP TIF proposal, you've got the TIF area growing. Nobody's going to disagree that that will happen, but no one has done any analysis of how that's going to affect the rest of Norman. You've got hand-waving. You've got, oh, surely people will love this. Well, let's see the data before we proceed any further. So if we're going to have an independent study, let's make sure that the independent study looks at that. But if you just look at the evidence that come from other tax increment financing locales, you can see prospects don't look all that good. So for budgetary reasons, let's not commit over $100 million in expenditures to the TIF when we don't know that the TIF is going to generate that much new money. The words that should always be on your lips when you're thinking about the TIF is net new. Not where do people come from, not who loves what, but what are the net new economic activities? What are the net new customers? What are the net new visitors? What are the net new firms? What are the net new jobs? And until you can get an answer on that, you should back away from the UNP TIF arena proposal. So intervention over. Let me suggest to you a couple of things that I think you should probably think about for the rest of this budgetary stuff. We probably should get rid of the current UNP TIF, because it's just siphoning stuff from the rest of the town and not creating any net new stuff. I think there's some evidence of that, or at least we should investigate that. And it's diverting $4 million a year away from stuff that we can spend in Norman otherwise. Secondly, let's prioritize our expenditures in a way that helps the people who can't help themselves fully. Let's make sure we take advantage, you know, take care of the least advantage when we make our decisions. In general, let's stop tying up money in special funds, so it's where we can't get to it when we need it for real emergencies. We've got money sitting- We've got money sitting, ready to put some new signs at the UNP TIF right now. We can't use it to fund CART activities. That seems like a misprioritization, and we've structured it into our own budget. And then finally, let's quit pretending that we're going to grow at historic rates when the evidence suggests that we might not. So positive discussion of the budget at the end, but let's stop buying the magic beans.
I'm going to be real quick.
You need to identify yourself.
Oh, yes, I'm Anthony McBride. I'm in Ward Eight. You know, it's very easy to say no. That's an easy thing, to just say no. But what I don't like is when you say no without any other options on the table. So I think it's very important to understand. It's easy to say yes on the other side when you've got something you're putting on the table that may benefit you. But I want to challenge the City Council members that if we're talking about the TIF, and I'm on the TIF Committee, so I want to be very careful about what I say. But when you say no, when you're looking at the shortfalls that's presented before the City Council today, looking at the trajectory that we're on, we're performing at rates that are pre-recession. I mean, right when the recession, four or five years ago, we're performing at that rate right now. And it's easy for us to come in here and say no and not say anything about what are we going to do about the shortfalls. So I'm challenging you today that if you say no, come up with a solution. And for those of you, you know, who say yes, we have two options. We can continue on the path that we're on and have to eventually cut costs in this city. So if you continue to spend like we're spending today on the trajectory that we're headed on today, we're going to have to cut costs. That's finance one-on-one. You're spending too much, you've got to cut costs. Or you can do the opposite and do some investments. You can try to invest when the times are hard, when you have to make tough decisions, and do what's right for the city. Now, a lot of people know that I'm very opinionated. I say what's on my mind. I don't mind doing that. But I'm telling you right now, if we continue on the road that we're headed down, we've got some serious problems coming up. And I want to go back to saying no. You can say no. Anybody can say no. I say no a thousand times to my kids a day. But if I offer no solution, all I hear is no. So I'm challenging you again that if you say no, I'm not opposed to you saying no. What I am opposed to you doing is saying no without offering any real alternatives or solutions for this city. For those of you who say yes, we have an obligation to the citizens of Norman to ensure that the investment that we're going to make is going to be sound for the citizens of Norman and that we're going to do something that's going to help our budget and that we're going to do something to move Norman forward. And we can't just do that by signing our name blatantly on something that you don't know too much about. So I hope that when you say yes or if you say no, you know what you're doing. And that's all I ask of you. Think about it from that standpoint. It's simple. We've got to make a decision, and you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. That's what it sounds like to me. So let's make the hard decision. That's what we pay you to do. Make the hard decision. So that $20 we pay you a month? Make the decision. But when you say no, come up with a solution, if you say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Mary Francis at 850 C Cardinal Creek Condos in Norman. And something we can all agree on. I think we can all agree that Norman's projected fund balance drawdown is not sustainable. And however, there is a solution. There is a solution. And Mr. Martin said there was a solution. I agree, there is a solution. Right now, about $4 million every year is being siphoned off by the current TIF. And that's each year. And it's my understanding that the council can pay off the TIF and get that $4 million put back into our budget, into our general fund. And that would be a healthy boost to our budget. Might be the complete solution, but it would be a healthy boost to our budget. I urge the members of the council to get our sales tax back into the general fund. And I'm wondering, would the Finance Director be able to tell us when would be the earliest that that could happen, assuming a positive vote from the City Council?
It's between two and three years.
It would help a lot if we could get our sales tax back. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a couple of comments. And they relate essentially to cities, and those cities being Tulsa and Oklahoma City. One city was quite a leader in the state in economic growth, and I'm talking about really some 30 years ago, almost. We used to look upon Oklahoma City as kind of the red-headed stepchild that just really didn't have its act together. We've seen the tables switch totally between those two cities. Oklahoma City got itself together, political economy sense, in a political economy sense, with the MAFS projects. They taxed their citizens. They revitalized their schools. They rebuilt the downtown district. They have been blessed with tremendous gains and public enthusiasm, support, and just incredible growth for a large city. You look at Tulsa. Tulsa's total retail sales in real terms have been stagnant for 25 years. They have lost their community spirit. We have in Norman a great opportunity, it seems to me, and I speak not from what my studies reveal, which I think will prove to be realized, much like Lex Holmes's projections were pretty much realized, done in 2005. We have a city here that isn't a tractor. We don't live in a dome in which you increase economic activity in one area and it declines in another. We have a very high level of retail sales per citizen, $3,500 higher per person than the statewide average. You get that by being a retail center, a regional retail center. We are that. Let's find ways that we can remain that way. We've got to get people. Everybody in the state is having problems with their sales tax. Tell me anybody that's not. Except for more, they've put a lot of effort. But even their rates have flattened lately. So economic development can make a difference and will make a difference. Promotion of Norman and looking to the future and what we can have our city be as a future and how we can be a central force in this metropolitan area. And I think those opportunities are available to us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, hey, everyone. Like Mr. McBride mentioned, you all do deserve to get paid more.
Identify yourself.
Everyone can agree on that. My name is Evan, Evan A. Dunn. I represent... What did you say?
I was going to say pay him more.
Oh, you referenced the fact that they get paid a lot when they don't, and you do need to get paid more. Specificity is important. As far as the budget goes, I've been trying to pay attention as much as I can to the Finance Committee meetings that Robert's been hosting and the City Council meetings. I think that there are a couple underlying flaws to our assumptions. The first of which is that these trends, whether it's a growth trend or a regressive trend, can be counted on to continue. I'm not sure that the relationship between transportation, I-35 commerce, external dollars being spent in retail are going to continue. And the reason why is because I am very... I'm not confident that the shale oil boom and the cheap energy situation that we all benefit from is going to continue. Maybe five, maybe 10 years. We can count on that. However, and I'm not going to get too much into the larger geopolitical stuff, but the uncertainty that we are all living in, the chaos of our culture does not make me confident about these assumptions and these projections. If anything, I think we need to be finding other ways of creating value and using what capital resources we do have access to to prepare for a time in which we don't have $70 a barrel oil. We know that each day we're spending those fossil fuels on our grass. We're either paying someone to do it or we're using it. Those are resources that our grandchildren's grandchildren's grandchildren are not going to have access to. We know that those are finite resources. Why do we do it? Human sensibilities. We want to see something green. We want to see something beautiful and calming so that although my life is chaos and there's dysfunction everywhere in my field of view, things are good. Well, it's a form of intergenerational theft. And to some extent, I'm not just representing Citizen Solutions. I'm speaking for all those future generations who are going to be living in an impoverished world because of our superficiality. And thank you for listening. Again, Evan A. Dunn with Citizen Solutions. If you want more information about what we're working on, you can email us at info@citizen-solutions.com. Or you can contact me directly, And my name is Evan. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan.
I'm Kathy Rand. I'm at 4509 Harrogate Drive in Norman. So I want to say I agree with Mary Francis on the TIF. Pay it off. Get the sales tax back. Put it back into our budget. That's a good start. And I'd also agree that we need to think about our ethics. And we need to think about what is the most ethical way to raise revenue. And I understand that it is within the power of the City Council to raise an income tax. And it would help address inequality, a graduated income tax for the amount that we cannot raise through getting the money back from the TIF. And it would help with social justice. And I would say that if we can't raise it through that way... I think sales taxes are the most regressive thing that we can do. And it hurts our citizens. It hurts the most impoverished among us. You know, the idea of taxing toilet paper, you know, things that are absolute essentials to people, it's just wrong. We should have a graduated income tax to meet the revenue that we can't get in other ways. Thanks.
Thank you. She's getting out. Mr. Gallagher.
Roger Gallagher, 2513 Woodson, excuse me. Last City Council meeting, it was mentioned that problems that were mentioned should come with solutions. So I've worked at a couple of things. And I think that one solution that City Council can do, and it's very easy, is to get an internal auditor. An internal auditor is responsible, if you've looked at the function of internal auditors, is responsible to the council, not the city manager, not the mayor in a mayoral city. It's responsible to the City Council. And we have grown since the last 12 years, double in population. Well, we still have a very similar financial department. It makes a lot of sense for a check and balance to have an internal auditor who can operate as he or she decides to do and comes back to the council and gives the council the results. And this would put, not a weapon, but it would put a mechanism in the hand of the council to help save money. From the research that I've been told by a friend of mine who was in commercial construction for 23 years and the chief CPA, he said that an internal auditor working through can save $3 for every dollar that the internal auditor or the staff generates. Now, that may be a figure that could change $1 or $2, but it comes from a person who spent his life as the chief CPA auditor for an international construction company. Look at it this way. That would check staff. That would check the mayor. That would check the city manager in either one of those cities. The voters check council by voting. And you would have an internal device to look at the finances, and you would check the money that the city spends through the internal auditor. So it was suggested tonight. And I think that's an excellent thing. Look at other cities. I think if you do, they have internal auditors. Cities of this size usually do. Look around at the cities in Oklahoma, and several of them do. As a matter of fact, they have more than one. We're talking about saving money. The question was, if you have criticism, come up with solutions. Sell the Sooner Theater. The Sooner Theater is a very good historical, solid building. It attracts different groups, and it stays somewhat used during each year. But why do we have it? We're paying utilities. It's an old building. Sell it. Let a private group or an art group or someone who... The groups formulate and keep the activities going in the Sooner Theater anyway. Why not just sell it? We have a lot of land and a lot of buildings in Norman that we're not using. About four or five years ago, I believe the comment was made by the city clerk that it's about $1 million a year for maintenance and upkeep in these buildings. And if I'm not incorrect, she said that was with the buildings in the land that we have that we are not using that are extra. Why not take a look, go through, when has staff done this lately? And look at the buildings and look at the land we have and examined the value roughly and decided if we need some of them. If we don't, sell them. Simplify the whole operation. We have land underneath the Porter Hospital. I brought this up several years ago, and I don't think anything came from it. I believe it's five and a half acres now. I could be wrong about that. I think the city attorney can correct me if that's incorrect. But we could sell... I think the city attorney can correct me if that's incorrect, but we could sell that land. Why are we holding on to that land when the Healthplex and Porter are the same now, and we still own that land? What are we getting from it? Sell it. We don't need it. We're not going to use it anyway. It's for parking and for the expansion of the Porter complex. That's another thing. Look at the city and examine those aspects of the city that we do not need. And I think that could help trim some of the budget and also simplify the operation. When I was on council, we voted at 1% hotel motel tax. That was six years ago. Prices have gone up in six years. They complained about 2% driving people away, the hotel motel people. They were here arguing that that wouldn't go. Well, it didn't change things. 1% didn't change a thing. Why not do another 1%? Put another 1% on hotel motel taxes. We also have more hotel motels now, we have more upscale facilities, we're not going to be driving people away. And that, in six years, is a reasonable increase. And if we do have a steady flow of tourists, I don't see why 1% more wouldn't add a little bit to art, a little bit to parks, wherever it goes. I think it's broken into four categories. We have, we spent $160,000 on the Porter Corridor. That is for people from Kansas City to come in to tell us what we should be doing with Porter Corridor. They came up with some Art Deco ideas, some of the buildings are still there, little has changed. They built a couple of walls, talked about spaces between buildings and green space and, and the types of walls that people should have there. They even talked about single-laning Porter. Thank goodness that didn't happen. You drive it now at 4:30, you could take a nap and your car wouldn't move for two hours. Porter Corridor was a waste of $160,000 from those people from Kansas City who thought they were going to bring the plaza to Norman. It didn't happen. We had a consultant, I don't know the amount of money, I think it was 40 or 50, who came in and talked to us about traffic down Main Street. He suggested one lane each way. Drive down Main Street now, and just imagine what it would be like, since the rejuvenation, to a certain extent, with city center has come about. So that money was wasted, too. I don't know, by looking at the ordinances in the city and perusing it, I don't think when we consider a project, we need to go to outside consultants all the time. We have a so-called major university here that does a great job and has influenced the city. It's the biggest employer in Norman. There are many people there talented in their professions. We even went outside the city for the art, for the new library. We have, we have a wealth of talent in this city through that and through businesses, and I don't see why we don't plum some of the people local for consulting work. Save some of that money, maybe we'll wind up paying the same amount, but the money stays local. So those are some of my suggestions that I think we could, you could take a look at. They're not, they're not earth-shaping, they're not going to change the rotation of the earth, but we can do a lot of things, and if we look at a budget, I don't care what size the budget is, even a household budget, there's always fat. We say we're trim and all this, but there's always fat. And if it gets down to where we are having to talk about projections and make it a legal budget, and then worry about making up for it during the year, you know, one time we let people off on comp time. I believe it was comp time when we did that. Now and then a day off, scattered among. Well, we have 830 employees in the city, or thereabouts. If every 60 days an employee took one day off without pay, that would be 1,660 or so days. Now, that would save some money, and that might help if you look at the average salary of an employee every 60 days taking one day off. Something very similar happened, what, five years ago, when we had the tremendous problems, and four people voted against the budget, but it still passed. So those are some of my suggestions, and they aren't, they aren't pretty in some aspects, but it's something that we need to look at when you look, when you talk about money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Rosenthal, 903 Cary Drive, Ward 4. First of all, I want to thank the council members. I know you have spent the entire year working on the budget. I've been there and done that, and I know it is a process that involves a lot of time. And then typically in the past, come this meeting, no one shows up. But the challenge was made by Councilmember Castleberry and Councilmember Hickman, and we have a full room. So congratulations on getting the attention of the Norman citizens. I also want to thank Anthony Francisco for years of service to this city, and who has done an outstanding job in terms of revenue estimation and budget management and keeping us on track. And it's been many, many years that he has advised this council and prior councils about the structural problem that we have. And for years now, we have been paying down our reserve fund to the point now where you no longer have that luxury. I also want to thank the city manager for his service during the really tough years in 2010 and 2011, when we were facing one of the worst budgets that we had. It was his efforts at budget containment that helped us get through that. The council at that time also asked him to offer up some solutions, including staff reductions. And when we saw those solutions, we didn't like them any more than you like the solutions of cutting CART, CCFI, and some of the others. But he's responded to the councils, your, this council and previous councils by giving you information that you asked for. So I thank him for his efforts and work. You have a structural budget problem, and it's now come home to roost, that's for sure. Before I get into my other remarks, I have to have a couple of quick rejoinders, though. We're talking about $5.6 million from TIF revenues that are not going into the general fund, not 4 million. I've heard that figure a couple of times tonight. And I also want to point out to my friend Bob Doffenbach that in Oklahoma City, every single MAPS proposal was voted on by the people, by the people of that city, and they had public support for those initiatives. And that's an important distinction, as you all work through this process that you're in right now with the University North, proposals related to the University North Park TIF. Now, the city manager outlined in your budget this year several megatrends on how to deal with the issues before you. And one of those potential solutions is to end the current University North Park TIF to bring $5.6 million back into your budget. We know that. We know that that's a potential solution. What you've heard tonight are based on a lot of assumptions. And that's what economists do, and, and I'm not an economist. But I do know that some of those assumptions that you heard in your presentation before your meeting are at least untested and need to be questioned and examined. Some of them are downright faulty, that all sales tax dollars of people who reside in this area will be spent in that area. That's a faulty assumption, and that's one of the assumptions in the analysis. And some are frankly just debatable. So if you build it, will they come? Will millennials flock to University North Park to live in apartment buildings there and work in service jobs? I mean, that's part of the solution here. We can already do high-tech, because that was part of the original TIF, and we've invested in the NEDC and other areas up there in terms of infrastructure. That part's already there. Residential is already there. But you're being asked to support what I think is at least debatable assumption, that the reason why millennials graduate from the University of Oklahoma is because they want to continue to go to sports events or to an entertainment center. I think that's worthy of examination and certainly debate. So as you go forward here, I think earlier, Councilmember Bierman asked some questions about lessons learned from the Norman Forward. So having been very much involved in some of the Griffin Park discussions, a lot of effort went into that. We had a whole charrette process with the Urban Land Institute to try to figure out how that would work. A lot of information was gathered at that time. But your point is well-taken. How many of the details can you tie down with respect to the proposals that are in front of you to extend the TIF and create actually two more TIFs? So getting an independent fiscal analysis of this, these proposals is absolutely essential, absolutely essential. And I challenge you and encourage you to spend at least as much time on this proposal, which is twice as big as the original TIF proposal. It's almost as big in terms of its overall commitment as Norman Forward, but the voters voted on Norman Forward. They will not on this. And it, and Stormwater, you've spent enormous amount of time engaging citizens to be part of this process. Now, I sort of heard my friend Scott Martin suggest that you get it done before the end of June, and that would be a travesty. That would be a travesty, and I think a breach of the public trust to engage citizens fully in this process, to do independent analysis, to have the debates, to test the assumptions, to figure out what's really important for this community, and then make that decision. Don't rush to judgment. I encourage you, as you go forward, to think about the trade-offs. To me, CART, the work that's being done on transit and regional transit, you want to sacrifice that for something else? I'm not sure that that's a good trade-off. But you need to be thinking about all of these issues of what are really the priorities for this community, and don't, don't violate the public trust. Take the time to do the analysis and to get the public input that you need. Thank you for service.
Thank you.
Ben Alpers, 208 Atacla. Tonight, I just really want to synthesize some stuff that I've heard, because I think it's important to kind of bring it together. During the session before the council meeting on the proposed TIF expansion, my council member Bill Hickman mentioned that for six months, more than six months, he's been trying to ask staff, can we have an independent economic analysis? And what do we need to do to get one? And there were no responses. Tonight, we got a response. And the response, as I heard it, was basically, well, if you decide to go ahead, we'll give you an independent economic analysis. That's getting it exactly backward. Here's the problem, and I think you've heard it from both sides here, there's a real disagreement here about whether the impact of this TIF is going to be a positive one or a negative one on our budget structurally. And until and unless you have an answer to that question, which can't be based on wishful thinking, you know, intuitions about millennials, or even spreadsheets about a single part of the city, until you know what those net news are, whether they're positive or negative, you do not have an answer and you cannot make an informed decision. And let me tell you why I'm a bit concerned about those net news. Because one of the things Dr. Ellis said was that we didn't hear anything about cannibalization. I actually beg to differ, we did hear something about cannibalization. The presentation on the arena noted that 40% of the use of the new arena would be OU basketball. That 40% is straight cannibalization. That is economic activity that is currently occurring at Lloyd Noble Center. It will be moved at considerable expense to the taxpayers of Norman to University North Park, moved incidentally from an arena that seats over 11,500 people to a proposed arena that seats 10,000 people. And those numbers, those zip code figures about where those people are coming from, they're for those Lloyd Noble crowds, right? So all we're talking about for that 40% of usage of this arena is moving economic activity from one part of Norman to another part of Norman. That is not building new net economic activity. And the same goes for graduations, another part of it, right? Norman North, Norman High use Lloyd Noble for graduations? Well, they'll probably use this new one for graduations, too. So you need to look at this, and you need to look at it very carefully, because there are questions about the current UNP TIF. That's why I, like a lot of other people, think that you should end it and solve a lot of your budget hole by bringing that money back into the budget. Because the numbers I've seen suggest that what that TIF did is what TIFs do very well, move economic activity from one part of the city to another part of the city. But that's not the way you plug budget holes, and that's not a sensible way to spend the public money. So step one here, get a full independent analysis that gives you solid, evidence-based answers on this new, new question. And if the result isn't clear net new economic activity, don't try to solve a budget problem by digging yourself a deeper hole.
Anne Gallagher, 2513, Woodsong, sorry, got a little close to the mic. I swore I wasn't going to talk about the UNP, but Cindy, this is for you. I've used it before, I'll use it again with a little song that goes, "Slow down, you move too fast." There's so many elements that we really need to look at that we don't have answers for. Okay, aside from that, let's go to budget. That's what we're here for, right? Okay. I am totally in support of an internal auditor. The reason for that is, I'm not saying anyone's doing a bad job, I'm not saying anyone's missing something, but having another person go in and look at a situation often just sheds a little different light on it. I mean, I had that experience of going into classrooms and just observing things and going, wait, did you realize that this is going on? No, wait, did I make a mistake? No, you didn't make a mistake, it's just somebody else taking a look at it. It's always a really good idea to have that happen. Councilmember Castleberry, I love the idea of strategic planning, and I'm so glad Anthony Francisco was on that same page. I think that's very, very important for us to take a look at. We need to put that piece of, not the piece of pencil, sorry, put the pencil to that piece of paper and try to figure out what's the best way to do that. Someone mentioned more. I do not want to see Norman become more. We had the experience several weeks ago on going on 19th Street. Guess what? I'm never going back. You want to talk about a traffic problem? We think we've got a problem at 36th and Robinson. We've got nothing compared to trying to cross 19th Street to go to a new place that I thought looked really great. It was really great. Will I ever go back to it? No, because I'm not going through that traffic pattern again. I am a little confused, and, and I don't know who can address this, and I don't know if you are going to address it or not, but the Norman Convention Visitors Bureau. I remember several years ago that that poor person was virtually attacked by the council because their presentation of their budget was so poor, and we didn't have good analysis. Well, now we have this great thing of analysis, and so now I'm confused as to why we wanted it done when we don't contribute direct money to them, is my understanding. So their budget is independent, why do we have them present it if it's independent? But I do want to applaud them because their revenue and their expenditures are exactly the same. I want that budget. I want to have that kind of power. So I was a little confused. So I was a little confused about that. But here are some questions that arose. How many people, how many positions are full-time employees? Because we have a budget on salary of 352,929. That seems to be a lot of employees, but I'm a school teacher, what do I know? So that, but I did, though it was a great job on that expenditure revenue, that's really impressive. I was surprised to find out that the leasing agent for the building, who is a limited partner or partner limited, I don't remember which way that goes, they're not required to play, pay property taxes on a building because the Norman's Convention, the citizens, I just added that, sorry, Visitors Bureau is nonprofit. Well, they're nonprofit, but the people getting the $31,800 a year are making a profit, but they're not paying property taxes. I went to the county assessors and I dug through everything I could find on that. So that's a, I'm wondering why they're not paying property taxes because we wouldn't charge the Norman Convention Citizens Bureau. Okay, so and then my other question is, what is the square footage of the building? Because the utility expenses seem to be high and I'd love to be able to round off my utility expenses and say, hey, it's this much for this, it's $2,500 for my gas and it's $2,500 for my electric and I know exactly what that's going to be, but when we look at what the expenditures are month to month, I'm not really sure how we can average that. Just some questions.
Spread them out. There's a seven there. Maybe you need one more person to help. Okay, Cynthia Rogers, 633, Reed Avenue. Thank you. I, I just wanted to show you, I'm not going to just talk about the UMP TIF, but just as a visual, since I have a lovely assistant. That is a big number. It's not a small number, it's a big number. It's a huge commitment. And so we really need to think about that. Okay, you can sit down. Thank you so much. It took three pieces of paper to write it. So I wanted to thank you all. I know, working on the budget, particularly when we have these structural problems, we all want solutions, we all want to fund the social services and Sooner Theater and CARTs, we know those are important, and we all want to make investments in the community that will make us better. And I think we're struggling right now to find those shared things we can agree on, right? We're not agreeing on the strategy we should take. And so what, I want to make just a couple comments. I appreciate that people made actual solutions. I think you know what my actual solution will be. But I know Ms. Promroy worked, has been working really hard on the TIF and making the financing work out. And it's notable to me that we could get immediate general fund release, relief by reducing the cut that we put in the, the TIF fund and we can get $2 million back. Well, we could actually get all of it back into the general fund and then we can decide about priorities, everything as a whole, and, and rank things. So one thing that's going, that goes on with the TIF, particularly when it's a sales tax TIF, and I think this is what we saw, mega trend six, nicely mentioned by the city manager, the apportionment of sales tax to the UMP TIF fund reduces revenues available for operating purposes. So I'm going to flash up my graph. I know you guys have all seen it because, you know, I was really proud of it and I've put it up many, many times. I don't know if you can see it on the screen. Okay, so basically what's going on here is the TIF area is growing, the sales tax have been continuing to grow because we spent a lot of money there and stuff went there and it attracts a lot of growth. That's what it's supposed to do. Now, the problem is that that line keeps growing over time. Part of that is because new stuff goes in there and then the stores that are there grow, Target sells more each year. And so when you have a sales tax TIF, the increment gets bigger over time because activity grows over time naturally. We could put in 2% inflation and that would grow. Now, the problem is what's happening in the rest of Norman's sales taxes? And that hasn't done as well as the TIF. So the story could be, well, the TIF worked because the rest of Norman didn't work. Or maybe this story is that we just moved everything around. I think we've heard both of those stories and will probably continue to hear arguments about what's the real story. But the bottom line for the general fund is, it's the rest of Norman, that's why we're having a budget issue. Because we need to feed the rest of Norman, not just the University North Park area, and we need what's happening there to provide growth in the rest of town. Because it's a general fund that we're using to spend on all the needed services we want like CARTs and Sooner Theater and the arts. So one of the problems with the initial proposal, I'm glad it was just a beginning discussion, was that provides immediate relief. But then that, the ask on the apportionment on the sales tax is going to ratchet right back up to right where it is right now, which kind of got us into the situation we're in the first place. That is not a long-term solution to get a, oh, we'll get, we'll get 80% back for four years. Because another thing that's happening is a Norman Forward Fund. You guys haven't gotten a report from us, my bad on that, but that's down, I think it's 6% or 7% from our projections. And the last pro forma we looked at, which had a very optimistic sales tax growth, was 4.25%. In this, this budget, you're projecting 4%, so that's a little high. And if you looked in the middle years there, that was pretty lean, which means that we might need to borrow some money from the general fund to cover some stuff. And by the end of that, it was really thin. So just at the time when the TIF proposal is going to increase the, the amount we shift from the general fund is exactly when Norman Forward is going to be thin. So we need to look at all these things over time together, hopefully use the same projections on what we think sales tax will do and not use a temporary fix, temporary relief to solve a long-term budget solution. So I'm going to reiterate what some other folks said, and thank you again, Anthony. It's a big number, it's a lot of money to spend. We all want a solution. We were offered one, one idea, a basketball arena multi-use. I'm guessing there are many other options we haven't even thought about that maybe would be unique for Norman, that would make Norman better and connect things. Maybe it is basketball, maybe it's not. Finally, you know, when things are tough and you're thinking about an investment, I think it's difficult to think of putting, so the city is being asked to put all their money in upfront, right? You got to build the arena first. That's 90 million roughly of the $100 million ask. So that's all the risk to taxpayers upfront. If it doesn't work out, we still got to pay off that note. If half of it gets built, 70% of it gets built, we still have to pay off the note. So all the studies we saw tonight, and trust me, I've looked at all of them in detail, it is part of my day job, they make projections, they make a plan. I mean, we know that the, the South TIF didn't work out the way it was projected to plan, which is why we have $8 million sitting there that could be used for something else. So plans, predicting that plans work out the way you think they're going to work out is, is a pretty risky strategy. So I encourage you, like my colleagues, not rush, not to rush into something that we think is going to be a magic fix to the budget when it's really, I'd say risky and only has a short-term patch. It's not a long-term solution.
Good evening, Council. Curtis McCarty, 4748 Ridgeline Drive. Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to talk tonight about the budget. I think it's very important that we understand where the city of Norman stands today financially and the information provided before us, I think, is very important. There's a couple of things that all of us know, we have a problem. We have a budget problem. How do we fix this? Norman, as you all have been many times and have probably received a lot of information about this, is not growing. Building permits are down, residential new home starts are down, people are not wanting to move to Norman. The numbers are there, the facts are there, look at it. School enrollments flat, if not a slight decrease. This is a problem. None of us want to live in a town that's dying. We need to grow, we have problems, we need to address these problems. I heard earlier about MAPS. MAPS was a tax increase, 1% to the citizens of Oklahoma City. It was not a TIF. Not one TIF in this city has been voted on by the public. It's been decisions by the council. This is not even similar to the MAPS project in Oklahoma City. We're not increasing taxes to all of our citizens. There's an opportunity before us by the Entertainment District to generate $25 million a year in additional taxes for Norman to help the community and its critical needs that we have. There's an additional, potentially additional money to our school districts to help all of our kids and to make our school districts better. This opportunity before us is potentially unbelievable in the Entertainment District in UMP. I looked at some of the graphs earlier today provided of these projects around the country. There's 25 or 30 of them on there. More than 50% of them were 100% funded by the cities. The University of Oklahoma and the foundation has offered up a public-private solution to help the city of Norman in our potential problems that we have. I can't understand how the citizens can't find a way and the council to make this something that can be great for our community. Many of us travel around the country and probably visit these areas. This is an opportunity to make Norman a destination, location, as we all thought that UMP TIF 2 was going to do. Those times changed. Brick and mortar stores changed. Retail has changed. There's an opportunity before us to make a difference in this area. I, I hope that all of you all think long and hard about the opportunities that this TIF potentially has for our community and the opportunities that weighs for our budget to help our city become strong again and grow again and become what we all want Norman to be. So thank you all for your time tonight.
I probably shouldn't do this. I'm Doug Kennon, Sooner Legends Hotel.
I know.
14 years ago, I stood in front of this same building, different people here, and I looked at each and every one of you in the eye and told you, and what I'm most concerned about, I'm very torn both sides as a businessman, as a community I live in. And so this is a very tough situation in many ways. But that night, what we voted on, and the problem was, I said that night and I stood in front of the city, I said, we're going to sign an agreement and vote on it with uncrossed Ts and undotted Is. And that agreement we made, however, 14 years ago, was that what it was? 14 years ago, when we made that agreement, two years later, it was not the same agreement and 14 years later, it is not the same agreement that we agreed upon and voted on as a council. It was very different. Multiple things, there was supposed to be an event center or the thing next to the embassy was supposed to be open to the general public. It wasn't. Things were done behind the scenes, I understand they paid for it. There were a lot of things different, but we voted, and that's what I want to know when you go to vote, that you vote on something that is concrete and in, you know, what you vote. Because when I go down and sign a contract at the bank or whatever I do, that's what I have to live by. I can't go, you know, change it because the world changed or economies changed or Amazon came about. A lot's changed in 14 years. So that's the biggest thing that I want to say is what you vote for, I mean, you can't just go change stuff, you know, in real life, you can't do that. A lot of things on prices, and I always talk about, I see taxation and I know a lot about business, but also the world, it doesn't cost the same to go fill your laundry basket or your food basket as it did. So there are a lot more taxes generated because the cost of things have gone up tremendously over the past five, six, seven, eight, 10 years. We don't live in the same world. So I think that skews a lot of things. Something I want to talk about on hotel motel taxes that was brought up a little while ago. Every percent counts. But also what I think is, is I think there's a whole lot of money out there on the occupancy tax. I think there's a whole lot of people out there that are not paying it that are supposed to pay it. And I send out bills to organizations and to groups and it's going to step on some toes if you say, if you knew who they were. But there are bills that are supposed to, and if I'm understanding right and somebody needs to clarify that, maybe, I'm not sure if Mr. Bryan or Mr. Lewis does, but on occupancy tax, isn't it supposed to be on everybody? Do we know that answer? Is anybody subject void from paying occupancy tax? I know sales tax you're not supposed to, but who is void from paying occupancy tax? Can anybody answer that? Anthony, can you answer that? And I'm, sorry if I'm kind of opening up, but I think there's a huge gap here of a lot of money that's out there.
Within the room tax ordinance, there are exemptions primarily for residents of Norman. So if you, basically if you live here no more than 90 days, you're exempt.
Right, if you're at least a 30-day resident in my hotel, you are the same as a occupant in a, as a thing. But as an organization, is a state group, is a team or somebody, are they exempt?
State employees on state business or federal employees on federal business are exempt.
Okay. But anything non, if the foundation is paying for something or groups?
Yeah, we get some confusion sometimes because just because you work for the university does not mean that you're exempt.
Right. And if you're just a, an out-of-town sports team that, from somebody here and staying here and out of town, would you be exempt?
Probably not.
Okay. Well, there's a huge bunch of money floating out there and people that we send bills to will say, take it up with us, we will not pay it and we'll scratch through the line on the occupancy tax. There are a whole lot of them out there and that's why I said I think there needs to be some real clarifications. And I don't know how much money that was, but I think it's pretty big money out there and it may be floating that there may be organizations that are not paying their fair share of the taxes there. And so that's what I thought. And anyway, so I, and then I had another former council member came to me today, it's just ironic that I stand here tonight, and he said, I shouldn't have said he, that he, but I gave it away. He said that if he had to do it all over again, he would not have voted on the TIF that night because what he voted on and where it stands today is because he was very adamant about bringing the conference center to Norman, but not knowing that that conference center would be controlled by one company and not allow outside vendors and other people to use it. So anyway, appreciate you. I understand y'all all have hard jobs and I greatly appreciate each and every one of you because it isn't very hard, it's not fun to get yelled at by both sides, but I appreciate you and thank you for your time.
Okay, we've had several requests to take a break, so we're going to take a 10-minute break.
We've had several requests to take a break, so we're going to take a 10-minute break. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close, Bob Lomir.
No. You've already talked. Oh, you already talked.
You already talked.
You already talked.
Okay, go ahead. Finish up. Then we're closing the floor.
Rule. I'm Mary Francis in 850 Cardinal Creek, and I have a concern because of the idea that Norman get on board with this arena and retail build-out by June is, creates, in my opinion, an ethical problem. And that is because the Ward Eight voters in the runoff sated that they wanted to hear a different voice to represent them, that being Alex Scott, who got elected. Voters also elected Dr. Joe Carter. He's taking the seat that is being voluntarily vacated in Ward Two. My concern is that by rushing into this decision that you, by June, you would be denying the voters, especially those in Ward Eight and in Ward Two, the representation they thought would be their voice in this major decision. Also, I am concerned, as many others are, that we need the independent study that Councilman Hickman and, I believe, Councilmember Clark also called for an independent study. Before the council makes any big decision on the OU Foundation request for millions of tax dollars, you should consider having that independent study in hand and the fact that the voters, especially in Ward Eight, want new representation to be vote, to vote on this big decision. Thank you.
The motion on the floor is to end public discussion.
2134 Summer Drive. I just wanted to note that according to the graph, the last two years, retail sales had fallen off. I don't know how much has been suggested that the Lindsay Street closure, which also corresponds with that same two years, where retail sales were plummeting and they were hemorrhaging money over there. I don't know if that's been figured into this graph. And I also don't know if we've done a great deal to bring those people back into that area to promote the retail that has survived. And I wonder if there's something we can do as a city to help regenerate some of that sales tax that we've lost over the last two years. I also want us to consider that an arena in the middle of retail is much like the retail that is on Campus Corner. Normal retail ceases. I only know this from experience from having a business on Campus Corner. Locals that would normally come just ceased to come whenever there was a football game. What we're looking at, though, is people from Paul's Valley, Ardmore, all the way south of us, they come to Crest and they come to Target and they come to Coles and Academy. And you're thinking of basketball schedules are much larger than the football schedule. And it only takes a couple of times of them not being able to get to where they want to go because of 10,000 people. And suddenly, we don't have their income either. And I think that's a really important thing to consider when you're looking at placing such a large facility over top of a retail-established area. Thank you.
Thank you.
We had a motion on the floor to end the public discussion. And we had a second. All those in favor, say aye. Raise your right hands. Put it.
Aye.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to schedule an agenda item. We already did that. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to schedule an agenda item on June 12th to adopt the FYE 2019 City of Norman Budget and the Norman Convention and Visitors Bureau Budget with an annual plan of work.
So moved.
Second. Motion on the floor is to schedule an agenda item on June 12th to adopt the FYE 2019 City of Norman Budget and the Norman Convention and Visitors Bureau Budget with an annual plan of work. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been. To place the agenda item on June 12th, agenda for the adoption of FY19 budget passes unanimously.
Mending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan to remove 750 East Imhoff Road from the High Density Residential Designation to Mixed Use Designation. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Is there a representative of the applicant?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Sean Rieger, representing the applicant in this case. I will be exceedingly brief. This is a very simple one that is being requested to change to mixed use for a spud. This was an RM six project that got built. Let me show you the photo and you will recognize it. There it is. So it's the view on Imhoff that got built recently as an RM six project. It previously was a commercial site. They transformed all the way over to RM six. Now, the hope is to go back to the front building having some mixed uses in it. They want to basically bring back some mixed uses. This was lauded by planning commission. One of the commissioners said he liked to see this, Commissioner Jean, who applauded this approach and liked it quite a bit. There's no protest. Nobody has come to any of the hearings to speak. Nobody had predevelopment. So I'll be that brief. Happy to answer any questions you have, and we would request your approval tonight.
Councilmember Holman.
I was just going to comment real quick that this project, when it originally came before council a few years ago, was a project that Councilmember Kovach and I actually voted against. It was in his district at the time. And basically, because we felt like this corner is the only commercial corner in this whole area. If you've ever been to that 7-Eleven, it's very busy. You often can't even get gas in there. So we felt like this area needed to remain commercial at that time. So I'm really excited to see that they're wanting to convert mixed use into the existing building and definitely support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am just verifying that it's in the existing building, not a new building.
That's correct.
Just changing some space within the building to a commercial.
That's correct. The front buildings, this building is actually about five buildings. There you go. This building is actually a complex that goes all the way back. It is just these front two buildings right here that would have the change. So the front two buildings right up here.
Do you know what's going to go in there yet?
I don't know as yet. It is, what we did was we took the mixed-use ordinance. You have a mixed-use district called the mud. We took particular uses out of that so that they would be appropriate in a mixed-use setting, and we put them in the spud to be in this type of use. Basically, office, some retail, coffee shop, things like that.
Thanks.
Councilmember Clark.
I am also excited about this, but how many apartments will we be losing?
It is, I believe, very few. I remember the parking spaces were about 38 because we had to offset the parking spaces. And we wrote the spud to say that we can't add more uses than overcome that parking. So I don't have the figure in front of me, but it's not that many, actually.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Just a quick question. Is this a mud or a spud?
This is a spud.
Dang.
Not a mud.
We still only got one mud. We've only used it one time. It still hasn't been built yet. But I thought we were going to come back with.
It's not a mud. A mud, there is a mud ordinance. It has pretty extensive provisions in it as to particularities of how the building gets built. This is already built, so we couldn't meet the mud in that sense.
No problem.
Any more council questions? Comments or questions from the audience? Final council comments. Motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Item 27 is a resolution rezoning property located at 750. Rezoning property located at 750 East Imhoff Road, medium family dwelling district to spud, simple planned unit development. This is a companion item to the item we just voted on.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Remember, last time you left, we.
Further council comments. Public comments. Motion on the floors to adopt the ordinance on second reading. By a show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. That was unanimous. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on a final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been. To adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Unit development established with ordinance 01011-46 to reduce the front yard setback from 50 feet to 20 feet for lot eight, block one, Tangle Woods addition. I'll entertain. The ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Is there a representative of the applicant?
Hi, I'm Brody Tucker with Avalon Homes, representing the homeowners. And we do have the subject property. This is the entire Tanglewood Development here. The property is back here in the far corner of it and is actually separated from the rest of the neighborhood by 27 acres of common area. And what we're asking for is that the front build line, which is right across this area, be reduced from 50 to 20 feet. This shows homes that are currently in the neighborhood here and then also around the surrounding area. This is the cul-de-sac that has the private drive going all the way back to the property with the common area out front here. One of the main reasons we're wanting to reduce the build line is in an effort to not disturb the natural terrain. It does drop off at the back corner of the property, and we're trying to avoid having to get into that area as much as we can.
Okay. Questions from the council? Audience comments? Final comments from the council? Questions? Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. By show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. That was unanimous. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. You had to stay a long time, but at least we did it fast. Mine is an ordinance closing a 50-foot platted building line located on lot eight, block one, Tangle Woods addition, a planned unit development. This is a companion item, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, second, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any further questions? Final council comments. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. By a show of hands, all in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. That was unanimous. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been. To adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and be limited to five minutes.
Mary Francis, 850 C Cardinal Creek condos. In 2009, a group of us organized 350.org Norman, an event because we were concerned about global climate warming. And the 350 organization, a national, international organization, had almost 5,000 events around the world that year. Norman had its own. And our keynote speaker was Cindy, Mayor Cindy Rosenthal. And she came and spoke about all of the actions that the city was taking to reduce pollution, to conserve energy and water, and do the things that have brought us to this point of being ready for 100. I just am so thankful that she had the foresight to start all of those projects and bring the city of Norman along. And the attitude and philosophy that came with that, all those actions, culminates in a community that wants to take care of the earth. The list of things that she told us about that day in 2009, almost 10 years ago, was quite impressive. And I just wanted to remind people, there are some folks who do remember that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Done. 1400 Garfield Avenue, representing Citizen Solutions. 20% of the people who are registered to vote in this city turned out last time. That is a number that I think should elicit shock and awe for everyone who's watching on television, for everyone who's still here. If I came home with a report card in which I got an F and I got 20%, my parents would have been livid and it would have been an urgent situation to address my sleep habits and my study habits and everything. Why we, as a city, don't approach civic engagement in a different way? I don't know. I would love to be in some kind of strategy sessions with you all about how to... Do we shame them into action? I was talking about oil. There's, there's something that we can do. There's something that we can... And we have the data. I remember, Robert, you mentioned that when Hawn Public was giving their presentation. You know, it was, I, I don't think we got the word out. Well, you know, we have the data. It's our job to teach, it's our job to elicit something from them that gets them motivated to start thinking about these hard issues, unless they're just so detached that they think, well, yes, this is my city for a little while. They don't want to put roots down. And because of that, they'll allow themselves to be seduced by the spectacle of this, or Kardashians, or the latest tweet, whatever it may be. And I find it difficult to hide my disdain and contempt for people who show no regard for the future, for their, their future, other people's future. And that's really what Citizen Solutions is really trying to do. We are trying to create a construct in which people can awaken to the transcendent transformational potential that they and everyone has. And I didn't plan this. I did not plan my life this way, but this is how it's evolved. I have had these transformational experiences, and I feel a responsibility to teach them. I have seen the impact of people coming together and organizing to oppose a zoning change. Human beings come together when there's real need. We will come together and we will solve problems. Well, we're not coming together and solving problems even when our, the city government is looking at a hole next year. Well, by God, we need to be doing something. We need to be putting together a strategy to get people aware of the fact that we need their input. Citizen Solutions needs people's support. I need people to, to contact me. I need to create a network, and the people that I need need to need that too. But they don't because public outreach isn't good enough. I'm not marketing well enough. I just can't do it all. And I don't think city government can do it. I don't think staff can do it all. But where are we going to find the money? How are we going to find these low-cost methods by which we can activate people's awareness and consciousness to care? That, that's a huge issue. And I'm going to keep working on it, and I know you all will too. You all don't get paid enough. I know we've got a couple of board members here. You all volunteer. And the immensity of sacrifice that we expect the people in our community to do who care versus the other 99, other than you all on TV and us here. I'm on your side, and I'm trying to get them on our side, too. Thanks, y'all.
Deb Clark, 2134 Summer Drive. I cut myself short. I forgot about Ed Noble Parkway. Highway 9 Bridge, Main Street Bridge, Lindsey Street Bridge. And you see what a skeleton is left over there on Ed Noble Parkway. Our retail sector has really been hit hard for the last two-plus years and the numbers show it. And I don't think it's a matter that the sky is falling. I really don't think Amazon has that much impact. We have enough unique retail to draw if people can get to it. I really believe that access is our issue, whether it means we throw money towards a train solution again, or more cart, or something. I understand the university's doing well with their bikes. I mean, we need people here and access to the retail we do have. And by blocking it or impeding it in any way, shape, or form, we are cutting off our own noses. And that's what has hurt us for the last several years.
Not much to say tonight, but come July 1st, Evan, I'll join you. I'll become part of Citizen Solution and we'll make a difference. That's all I have tonight. I don't want ownership. I don't want that. I just want to be a volunteer. I'm there with you, man.
Just a few things. Something that was a pretty big deal for Ward 7, big deal for the whole city actually. But on Friday, we had the open house for the wastewater reclamation facility that we just made the largest single infrastructure investment in the history of the city in that plant. And some of us on the council were there when we did the tour before we did the ribbon cutting, or not ribbon cutting, but the groundbreaking a few years ago for this project. And then several of us got to be there on Friday to see the finished project. A lot of folks don't really know much about that facility, I would imagine, but it's really arguably the most important thing we have in our entire city. It's not the most attractive thing to talk about, but every sewer, every sink, every toilet, every shower, every drain in the whole city of Norman, all goes to this one spot, to this one treatment plant. And one of the best things about it that we've learned too is that we don't use any chemicals to treat it either. And it's a really amazing facility, how it runs. It's really amazing that we were able to, humans were able to come up with something like that and build something like that. I wouldn't even know where to begin. But the utility rate increase that paid for this project was the first ballot initiative put forward to voters after I was elected to council five years ago. And it passed by a large margin. And it had been almost 20 years since a rate increase had happened for wastewater. I think it was in 1996. And we were able to get voters to approve that rate increase in 2013 to pay for these much-needed improvements. And so I was really excited about that. It was one of four city events I had to attend Thursday night, being a sneak peek at Westwood. And then Friday morning, we had Bike to Work Day. And then the open house of the water reclamation facility. And then Friday afternoon, we had the police memorial service. So it's been a really busy time, lots of stuff going on in Norman, lots of great events to attend. And just want to make sure everybody knows that when you go to vote for certain things like rate increases for infrastructure improvements, the water treatment plant or wastewater plant, those things are getting done. And the result is a really big deal for our community. So, thank you.
I will second Councilmember Holman's compliments about the open house that we attended on Friday. Councilman Councilberry was there as well. I was so inspired by the pride that those 21 employees have in their work. Like, man, and they've been there for years. Plant manager Steve Hardeman, what did he say, 31 years? And he oozes with pride. And I'm so proud of the staff that we have in the city of Norman because they work so hard. And that's why I try to go to these tours, especially the, you know, less appealing ones, I guess, because they deserve it and, man, they work hard. And it was a fascinating tour. And Councilmember Holman and I are going to be doing a joint ward tour coming up, so stay tuned for that. I want to thank all of the volunteers that came out to the Eastside Business Association cleanup this past weekend. It was beautiful weather, lots of ticks though. Wow, they're not joking about that stuff. So, man, I think out of the 20 of us, 18 found a tick when we were done. Like, it's...
Just one.
Yeah.
Just one.
Well, I only had one, about fainted. But, yeah, so, but it was cool. We did some good work. Thank you to the transcript for covering that. It was part of the Great American Cleanup with Keep Oklahoma Beautiful. So, Lake Thunderbird is a wonderful amenity that we have in East Norman, so I'm happy to do our part to keep it clean. And again, my apologies for being late. My firstborn is almost done with elementary school and I've given a lot to the city of Norman over the past two years and I will continue to give as much over the next. But I was not going to miss that and I'm sure you can all understand that. So, thank you.
I'm sad I missed all that stuff this weekend. I was out of town, so sorry I missed it, staff. You guys did a great job. However, most of Ward 5, I would like to point out, does not use that system because we have septic tanks. Anyways, and...
They didn't have to pay for it either.
And we don't pay for it either. It's a good thing. Anyways, so if you want to talk more about those kinds of fun things, I will be at Franklin Baptist Church, 72nd and Franklin Road on Saturday, the second Saturday in June, which I thought I had pulled up here, is the 9th, June 9th at 10:30 a.m. for a ward meeting. I have them every month. I'd love to talk to you if you have any questions about the budget, or the UNP TIF, or the anything. I would happily discuss it with you, even septic tanks. That's all I have.
Good evening. Thanks, everybody, for still being here and for those that are watching at home. I just wanted to give a little bit of feedback and I have a couple of announcements. I do think that some of the ideas I heard tonight about the budget at least are intriguing. And as Dr. McBride said, we should consider our options. Like, maybe do we have some excess property? I know we have the property on Gray Street where there used to be a piece of plywood in the front window. I used to get comments on that all the time. And we do use it for parking. You know, should we do something with that? Can we find somebody who might be interested in developing it under our Form-Based Code and turn it into a productive piece of property? Should we consider a hotel motel tax? Can we even do an income tax? I don't know. But at least those are things that maybe we can talk about and see what options we might have to explore in discussions regarding our budget. With regard to the TIF, you know, I think that it's obviously a tough conversation. You know, people on both sides that love the city of Norman. But if we're going to have the conversation, we do need to dig into it. If we're not going to have the conversation, let's not have the conversation. My couple of comments that I want people to understand are this. This is a two-part, two-piece deal, I still think, I assume, even though there wasn't much discussion about that tonight. One is a zoning change to a PUD. I think we need to have a conversation, a meeting where we're talking just about the zoning piece of this, the master plan, but is actually going to be in the form of a PUD and what that's going to look like. Is it going to contain things dealing with stormwater? You know, and the other items that we have talked about, some of them were mentioned tonight because there were a lot of other comments and questions that I know I had and I assume others that we weren't able to get into. And then do we have a conversation, a separate conversation about the finances and the projections and an independent study and getting an independent study done or having an independent study done and having it presented to us? You know, I think those are two things to consider. You know, I'd like to hear from, we have a lot of wonderful citizen committees and a lot of other partners involved in this. You know, I see Mr. Thompson is still sitting back there. He's involved with EDAB. I have a note down here that EDAB has been talking about parking solution and a multi-jurisdictional parking authority. Let's get our citizen committees that are involved in these discussions already and see where, you know, have them make some recommendations to us and be of some assistance to us. You know, we have an NEDC staff that we are part of and our city manager is on that board. I mean, let's have them make a recommendation to us. You know, the schools has been a topic of a lot of discussion, how they could benefit from this and be of support. But I heard no comments tonight from anybody really representing the schools. You know, the school board is elected. You know, are they willing to step up as an elected body and pass a resolution or proclamation supporting this initiative? You know, we have, this is a community effort. And so if people want to have the discussion, then I think it can be a discussion broader than just in this chamber like it was tonight. You know, if that's what the community wants. And so I think we have citizen groups, whether it's committees like EDAB, like I mentioned, or NEDC, or the schools. And I think that we need to hear from those groups as well and have these conversations, you know, if this community wants to do this. Now, I have a couple of announcements. On May 24th, this Thursday at 4 o'clock, the Community Planning and Transportation Committee will be meeting. We'll be talking about cart and public transportation, green building code and low-impact development as well as tree ordinance. And so if you're interested in those topics, come and visit with us. We'll be right next door having those conversations. On Saturday, May 26th, there's a wonderful fundraiser for the Norman Pride. It's at Lazy Circles over on East Main from 1 to 9 o'clock. There'll be music, art, and craft beer, if that's your choice. Donations are accepted to help raise money for the Norman Pride Organization. And then it's a wonderful, fun time of year here in War 4. We still have lots of great festivals, but we're starting our Movies in the Park, Lyons Park, on June 1st, Friday night. Black Panther is going to be shown in the park. And then on June 3rd, Sunday night, Summer Breeze Concert Series will be continuing over also at Lyons Park. And Jacob Tovar and the Saddle Tramps, I love that name, Saddle Tramps, they're going to be performing. Apparently it's a country western bluegrass band, so if that's your cup of tea or you just want to have a reason to go out to the park on Sunday night, I encourage everybody to come out. And then, of course, before our next council meeting, will be another second Friday Art Walk, June 8th here in historic downtown Norman. Come down to Norman and enjoy some music and art and it's a wonderful time to be in our downtown. So, thank you all very much and see you soon. Thank you. As you know, I like to do bullet points. I totally support having a dedicated revenue source for cart. We should have an eighth cent, 16 cent sales tax that is dedicated just for cart. I'd like to have that conversation. Evan, I just want you to know when I run for president, I got a simple platform. We're going to have two tax codes. We're going to have the Republican tax code and Democrat tax code. And whenever you vote, you check that box and that's how, if you vote that way, then you vote all elections that way. So you put your money where your mouth is. That's my solution, okay? I'm good with it. So everybody's going to compete with that. I think we do need to realize a couple few things that we didn't talk about tonight because it really, on the TIF, there would be $800,000 loss to Norman Public Schools. So if we're going to do that, we have to figure out a way to make that up because we would be the ones taking the money away from public education. So we would have to be the ones making that up. The South Park of the TIF is only 70% complete. So before we start throwing her under the bus, it's only 70% complete and it's only 6% below budget as far as revenue. So let's just, it's not done yet. Regarding the comment about whether we should vote or not on this before June 30th, our council members are elected for two-year terms. If we're going to take that position that just because you didn't win an election or because you don't run for election again, that you can't vote anymore, there's no reason for us to have meetings in June. We passed a stormwater utility vote on the last meeting in June, two years ago, when we had three new council members and a new mayor coming on. Nobody said anything about, oh, you rushed it. Put it off. We've got new council members coming on. So nobody said anything then, I saw no complaints then about, well, we need to have new council members come on before you guys vote on this. So, timing happens, things come up. Something's going to happen the 1st of July. I think you have to, whenever applicants bring stuff forward, you vote on it when you vote on it. So I don't think it's necessarily a rush and I don't think the comment that just because... Anyway, we've done it before. We've had three council members come in and on their last meeting, they proposed a stormwater utility. A third of the council approved that. And of course, the voter said no. So I might tell you something right there. So I'll leave it at that.
I, for one, am very excited about the environmental initiatives that the city is taking. I think there's a great deal of potential there for the future. So I think that's good for the citizens and for everyone, good for all of us. Second of all, Deb reminded me tonight of Lindsey and I wanted to report that the Lindsey Street Merchants just had an event on Lindsey this past, was it past weekend? Yes, on Saturday, the dog days of summer. They try to be cute and have themes and they had dogs out for adoption and at least three or four dogs were adopted on Saturday and they were very proud of that. And I went out and saw some of that happen. But Deb, you made me start to think about that and the fact that our retail in that particular corridor along Lindsey is not back up to where it needs to be. And of course, the streets are great. I mean, they look fantastic. We're still in the process of getting all the landscaping taken care of, so that's not all the way in place yet, but it will be and it's going to be beautiful. So please remember, I realize I haven't said this in a while, so, you know, shop local, spend your dollars locally if and when you can. It really does matter to our local merchants that you go and you see them. It absolutely does. And it doesn't even have to be massive purchases, but these people know you and will remember you. So stopping by on those days where they have these events, but on other days, as Deb will tell you, because she knows as a small business owner as well, is very, very important. So if we could remember to do that, it would make a great deal of difference. So let's remember to do that for all of us in Norman, please. So you guys have a good night. We'll see you next time.
So, as you all have heard tonight, we are facing a pretty significant budget hurdle to overcome. And we've also heard about one possible solution to help solve that and future budgetary constraints. But no solution, despite what some have said tonight, is a silver bullet. Nothing is, nothing ever will be. We also need, not want, but need to pass a stormwater utility. Something that was briefly mentioned, but I don't think enough emphasis was put on that. And I'm under no illusion that our decision on the UNP arena will not have an impact on stormwater utility and the fact that that has to go up to a public vote. So, you know, that will likely inform not a small part of my decision-making on UNP and along with an independent financial analysis of the project plan and the possibility for success. So I will be pushing for that, the presence or absence of which will have a very significant impact on my decision about that. But that's actually not what I wanted to focus on today. I'm going to bring this in a completely different direction. Last week, the Sooner Disc Golf Club, the Frisbee Golf Club, held the 40th Annual Norman Pro-Am. So this tournament has been held in Norman for the past 40 years. It is one of the longest-run disc golf tournaments in the entire country. The first course in Norman was established in 1976. So we've been on the forefront of that for a really long time. That event continues this coming weekend with the pro players coming to town. More than 250 people will spend a total of four days in our city. They spend money on food and gas and beverages. Some of them stay in hotels, others stay with friends. But they came to Norman because of our well-known, beautiful disc golf courses. And this local attraction is by definition low-impact. It preserves green space, not just for the disc golfers, but also for walkers and the larger community. And when the course at Ruby Grant comes online, hopefully in the next year to 18 months, Norman will be able to bid for the kinds of tournaments that have doubled and tripled those numbers in other parts of the country. And so to me, that's an important thing that's happened in this city. And just to give an example, the city of Emporia, Kansas, has a And just to give an example, the city of Emporia, Kansas, has a population of 25,000 and they've bought into disc golf in a really, really big way. The Glass Blown Open is held every April. It hosts 225 players, their caddies and their families. And with the support of the Chamber of Commerce, the city and the Convention and Visitors Bureau, this one tournament held in the city over four days has a $2 million economic impact. They book every single hotel room in an hour and a half radius. There is literally not a single Airbnb to be found in that area. People stay in campgrounds, people rent out their front lawns for people to come and stay for this tournament. Nearly 80% of disc golfers are between the ages of 20 and 49. 85% have some college, up to a master's degree or higher. And so solutions of all shapes and sizes to our budgetary problems are out there. They could be big, like the UNP arena. They could be small, like investing in disc golf tournaments that could bring hundreds of golfers and their families to our city every single weekend. And so I want us to think smart and I want us to think of them all. Emporia has the right idea. Four days, 225 golfers, $2 million in local economic impact. And so I want to say congratulations to Sooner Disc Golf on a wonderful event this weekend. Um, and for those who want a better idea of what disc golf is and what it can do for our city, on Friday, Saturday, Sunday and Monday, you can go to Northeast Lions or Griffin Park and see some of the best disc golfers in the country battle it out. And you can talk to them about the fact that people in Tulsa wake up and say, I think we should go disc golf in Norman today. People in Paul's Valley and Purcell and Ardmore, they wake up and say, why don't we go to Norman today? The city of Duncan maintains two disc golf courses in Duncan that over 400 people go to for the last weekend in March for the Duncan Hill Climber. It's one of the most difficult courses in the state. And people climb over themselves to try and get a spot in this tournament. It sells out in 20 minutes. So, we do have budgetary problems. We have possible big solutions and we have possible small solutions. And I just don't want us to be focused on only one when there are so many options out there that could do great things for this city and make Norman a destination city in so many ways. So I appreciate the crowd tonight. I think this is one of the biggest crowds that I had, that I have seen since coming to city council meetings. So I really appreciate that. And I hope that you all will start thinking both large and small with me about our budgetary situation and what we're going to do to solve it because we have lots of options out there. Thanks.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one simple comment tonight. We, back on May the 9th, we had a really good, uh, public meeting. Our citizens came and participated in our ADA Transition Plan Update. It's a part of that process. We have a website. It has an active link to a survey as well as an active map. And so there's still time if citizens are still interested, want to participate in that survey, they can go to that website and get that additional information and get that, that information, those concerns brought into that process. We should be winding that, uh, that study up here in, uh, in the next few weeks. So the time is still open if you want to input into it. Thank you, Mayor.
Budget discussion. And I, I want to kind of reiterate what, um, Mr. Lewis said about the financial, independent financial study. There were a number of us on the council that have expressed our concerns about having enough information to make good decisions. The financial, independent financial, um, study was one that, that has been brought up. It's been discussed with staff, it's been discussed with the city manager. My assumption was that when we got to a point where we had enough information, that's when we would do the financial study. So if we're at that point now, then maybe we should go ahead and move on towards the independent financial study. I think it's a really good idea. I also make, want to make a comment about the, the budget in general. Our problems this year, we've done more highlighting of them certainly. But ever since I've been on the council for five years, every year we've had this same discussion when we get to this point in the budget. We have, we have a systemic budget problem. And part of that is because, well, a lot of it's because we're so, so dependent on sales tax. The other part is we have to vote on all of our utilities. So our population kind of has this idea that, where you're always asking us to vote on things. Well, we are always asking them to vote on things because we have all sorts of utilities. And then we have Norman Forward and we had the PSST and we voted on all of those things. So those things all add up to making a problem. And then we've never been able to get the stormwater utility passed. We really desperately, like Councilmember Beerman said, I haven't forgotten that for one day, for one hour. We need a stormwater utility. Even if we invest in the arena and the entertainment district, it's not going to be enough. We have to have a regular funding stream for stormwater. And, and we have spent an entire year with the Citizens Committee. We're going to start doing open houses. And I hope everybody comes and learns more about what our need is. So people will understand why we're asking you to pay money to take care of our stormwater infrastructure and stop the flooding and stop the property damage and keep our water cleaner. So that's all important. So the two things we've talked about every year have been stormwater utility and we could end the TIF. And that would put money immediately back into our, our general fund. Okay, we do that. Even if we get the stormwater, even if we end the TIF, we still have a structural budget problem and we're going to still have problems in two or three years. So it will help and we can do that. But I really do think we, we have just almost finished, NEDC has sponsored a Norman Economic Strategic Development Plan. You know what it told us? It told us kind of what Councilmember Beerman said. You have to do everything. You have to do all of it. We have to do something to continue to grow and keep our community vibrant. And what we've learned is, we've learned we're losing more millennials. We're learning, losing more people with education. What are we going to do to turn those things around? We don't have enough young people now. Our school enrollment's going flat. What are we going to do about that? So we're really going to have to do a lot of things. One of the opportunities that's been put before us is the possibility of an entertainment district, is the possibility of an arena. Huge, huge investment. It is risky. But we know that those entertainment districts have made a difference in a lot of communities, like Lincoln, Nebraska. Is that the right, is that the right thing to do? I'm not sure. But we've had the best options so far put before us. And I think we should continue to investigate it. I think that what Mr. McBride said, you know, don't just say no. Don't just say yes. Look into it and try to make the very best decision you possibly can because this is on us right now. And it's not an easy decision. So I hope we will continue to get information and be able to make the very best possible decision about what's being put before us because it could make a huge difference to our community. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.